I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha Full Board of Education meeting tonight. It's Wednesday, October 8th. Beautiful night out there. One of the reasons why we love to live in Wisconsin is our falls. We're going to start our evening out tonight by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in that.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langill.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're going to start off with our bright lights. We have a representative from the Waukesha Education Foundation, Kathy Gardner. Many of you know her as she's worked with our district for many, many years. Kathy?
Good evening. It's with great pleasure, as a former educator in the district and now a member of the Waukesha Education Foundation Board, that I introduce the bright lights tonight. It's one of our grant recipients. From our grants that we give, we collect money and raise money every year. This is our 12th year of collecting funds and awarding grants. We've administered over 90 grants over that 12-year period, more than 90 grants. And tonight, I'm going to introduce Greta Voit, who's a North High School physics teacher. And since I'm a literacy specialist, not a physics teacher, I'm going to let Greta explain her grant to you. This is just one of the grant recipients. Greta, the dollars that are funded through our grants are dollars that typically wouldn't be funded through the normal operating budget. That's one of the considerations that we use as we award grants to help start up new programs that are innovative and enriching for the students. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Greta and let her explain her grant to you.
Hello, I'm Greta Voit. I teach physics at Waukesha North. And I've had the opportunity to actually receive two different grants from Wisconsin, or Waukesha Education Foundation. It's been a great opportunity for me to be able to really enhance my programs and really do some things I never would have been able to do otherwise. So, I'm hoping we can spend some time right now talking about some of the cool things that are going on as a result of those grants and get to see a little bit more about what physics looks like right now in the school districts of Waukesha. So, to begin with, I want to talk about the premise of my first grant. So, the first grant that I wrote was basically talking about the idea that traditional instruction for physics, the way I learned physics, was lecture-based. You sit down, the professor, the teacher is telling you, "This is the equation. Now, here's a problem. Go and apply your equations in this problem." You know physics, good job. And we realized that there's a lot of research that says that that's not very effective and that students are not really learning physics, or the vast majority of students are not learning physics using that methodology. So, I wrote my grant with the premise of finding a way to be able to get students to become the center of the instruction and the center of the data collection experience. So, the first grant that I was able to write two years ago was about acquiring these dynamic tracks. They're 2.2-meter tracks from Pasco. And it's kind of simple, right? Just a track. It's a nearly frictionless track and we're able to have carts that run down a ramp. Okay, this is very exciting for me because it's an opportunity to develop some really awesome data and some really awesome equations. Now, because I am not able to, hold on one second, there we go. Because I am not able to bring a couple of my students over today, I had a couple of videos that I wanted to share with you of my students explaining how this works and how they're able to engage in learning as part of these tracks and some of the other devices that we have. So, I know some of you know Maura, she's our representative for the school board from North, and she was one of my former physics students from last year.
I'm Maura Flanagan, and I'm here to talk to you guys today about these awesome ramps that you guys gave to us. And because of these ramps, today's ICANN statement is, "I can be a scientist."
"So, I can be a scientist." She was very excited about coming up with that one. And the idea of being able to be at the center of the data collection and the center of the development of these concepts and ideas. So, instead of having me going through and telling them, "This is the equation you're going to want to use," instead, they're using technology and using sensors to be able to collect this data. On the right-hand side, you can see a little sensor. That's actually a motion detector. And that motion detector goes to the top of the ramp, and it's able to collect data for how an object is moving within its scope. And it gives instantaneous data back to the students through graphs and through a data table to be able to figure out and develop ideas and concepts. So, Maura's going to show you a little bit more about how that works.
So, this is what we're going to do. We're going to have this cart go down the ramp so we can measure its velocity by that motion sensor, and it will pick it up on the computer. Two, one. So, if we look here, this is our velocity that is measured until the cart stops. By hitting this, we can find our best-fit line, which shows us our equation.
Seems kind of simple, but the idea, though, is that these graphs, it looks like this. These graphs are generated automatically for the students. They're able to create best-fit equations based off of that. And now, this is where the exciting part comes into play. They're able to look at, what is the meaning of the slope? What does it physically represent? And now, they've had the kinesthetic experience to go in and really create meaning for all the different parts of these equations. Like we talked about in physics every single time, every number has meaning, everything has significance, and now, the students were the scientists that were able to develop these equations and these ideas. So, with these equations, we've developed the general equations that they're then able to apply and deploy within various word problems and throughout our entire experience. The way it works as they get this data is they're able to go through and develop whiteboards. So, they've collected the data, they develop a whiteboard that presents their data to the rest of their peers. So, now, they have to present their information, their findings, to the scientific community. The scientific community, the students in the class, then discuss, collaborate, and develop concepts and models that they're then, like I said, able to apply and deploy as they move along. And Maura's going to talk a little bit about why she likes this.
So, with these ramps, we are able to, instead of getting lectured at us for the entire hour, we're able to do hands-on labs. So, Ms. Voit isn't just lecturing at us. Personally, I'm not too good at science, and this was a way to help me learn. So, instead of her giving us the equation and trying to figure it out, we were able to figure out the equation by ourselves. So, we have our Level 4 applying on what we have already learned here.
So, these ramps really gave our students the opportunity to collect really meaningful data that comes through and allows them to really make meaning out of it because of the fact that these tracks are pretty much frictionless. So, they're able to really use this data to develop equations with really student-focused, student-centered discussions. In addition, besides just going and using these equations just to go and apply these concepts in our word problem, we're also able to apply it outside of physics land, which is what I call my classroom.
So, we took what we applied here. We took our equations that we had figured out from our ramp and our little carts, and we got to apply it to a real-world situation with a cop car. So, we timed the braking point in the acceleration and how long it took to brake for the cop car depending on each acceleration, and we applied the equation that we had learned from our ramps to the cop car.
So, this is what she was talking about. She got very excited. She said, "This is the highlight of my physics experience." We were able to go and get a data table from the DMV in California that talked about how various speeds affects reaction time and braking distance and how that changes as you increase your speed. And my students were like, "Hey, could we test this out and see if this actually makes sense? Is this data actually realistic?" So, they developed their own equation in which they were able to test the reaction time and braking distance of our police liaison officer as he was driving a squad car. He put on the lights, it was very exciting. And with that, they were able to change not only the speed, but also change the road conditions. It happened to rain one of the hours, so we got to look at how road conditions, tire tread, and things like that affect our data. They were able to analyze it using videos, using our equations, using our graphs, and really make a lot of meaning out of what we were able to experience. So, now, physics is no longer just something we learn in the four walls of physics land. We now have expanded out into the real world and found ways to connect that. So, this creates the idea of how these ramps can be used for many, many other things in physics, including springs, collisions, and, this is one of my favorites, there's a little video. This is a little launcher on a cart. Once again, it's the simple things in life. Okay, so, we have a little cart going across, and it launches a ball up in the air. It catches the ball. How crazy, projectile motion. So, we're able to talk about all of those kinds of things because of the equipment that we have, that we were able to acquire through the WEF grant. So, we also had the opportunity and privilege of writing another grant this last year, and that was for the entire Science Department at North. As we've been moving into the world of having iPads, we are wanting to find ways to be able to use our iPads for data analysis and data collection. So, one of the new fancy-fangled new techniques is using these mobile data collection devices called LabQuest 2s. Basically, they look, I have one over here, they look like this, little guys. They connect up with the same sensors that we were able to use in the past, but now, we have an opportunity to have a mobile device that's able to connect also to the iPads. So, the students are able to make sense out of what's happening. So, I'm going to go and show you a little demo on how this works. It's very exciting. We're going to go and determine the acceleration due to gravity right now. So, I'm going to get this up on the screen, and hopefully, we'll be able to see this all happening as we move along. Yay. Okay, good. So, I'm going to show you what this looks like by using a little opportunity to kind of have a little projection camera. Over here, you can see that I have a motion detector. This motion detector is what's able to collect the data for us. So, we are going to be able to go and use our LabQuest 2 and a medicine ball, use a motion detector, and collect instantaneous data involving our object as it's falling down. So, let me see if I can get this set up real quick. Okay, so, now, the data is in our little LabQuest 2, and we're able to select a region of the LabQuest 2 that we are interested in. And then, I can go up and click Analyze and click over to our velocity graph, which is what we're interested in. There we go. There's our velocity graph. We're interested in a little portion of the graph where our object was increasing speed or speeding up. So, if I go over to our linear fit, it gives me a slope, which is our acceleration due to gravity. Right now, it's saying it's about 10.3. The actual number, does anyone know? 9.8 meters per second squared. So, we're pretty close, pretty close. So, what we're able to do, though, and especially if we're able to control that condition a little bit more, we're able to get really, really accurate data involving our detectors and these LabQuests. We're actually just starting out using these, and as we move along, these LabQuest 2s, like I said, will allow us to use our iPads and analyze that data in ways that are really, really pretty exciting and meaningful. In addition to what I'm doing in physics with this, one of my colleagues over at North, Eric Hill, who's a science teacher over there, has also used these LabQuest 2s as an opportunity to go and use them in the field. And he was actually able to take his students on a canoeing field trip. So, he's going to explain a little bit more about how LabQuest 2s were able to help his instruction.
The LabQuest 2 data sensors are super-user friendly, and they allow for real-world experiences for our students. We went on a canoeing field trip where the students used the sensors along with some different types of probes, like this is a temperature probe, this is a turbidity probe to look at the cloudiness of water. They also have flow rate probes, and they connected it to GPS units. And we used all of that information to gather some information about a local river, the Bark River. Students got to learn a lot about the local geography, learn about how humans are impacting that watershed. And they've taken that, and they're coming into the classroom, and they're building small-scale models based on the information, the data that they collected. This is an experience that I would never have been able to give my students before, and they totally have a greater and deeper understanding and appreciation for this content due to the use of technology in the classroom.
Here are a couple of pictures of his students as they were going on this canoeing field trip, using these mobile devices to be able to collect the data in the actual river. Once again, experiences they never would have been able to have had we not had these devices. So, once again, now, we're showing that data collection can happen anywhere at any time, and it's really creating a really great opportunity for our students to be involved in that idea of, "I can be a scientist." In addition, I have one of his students talking about why that experience was meaningful for him.
I'm Austin Wire at Waukesha North High School, and I'm in Mr. Hill's Environmental Studies class, and this is Voit, AP Physics class. And I was going to talk a little bit about this LabQuest thing that we have because we were able to go on a field trip recently with Mr. Hill's Environmental Studies class. We were able to go out into the actual real world and go in our actual river and take a lot of measurements on things that we might have not been able to get in a classroom setting because of all the different tools and attachments we had. And it gets kids out of the traditional classroom setting and gets them in situations where they have to work with other people and try different things and learn about stuff that they might not have been completely comfortable with. And it gets people just, it's a good thing because it gets people out of their comfort zone, and they get to try a lot of different stuff, and it also has a lot of good uses. And there are a lot of things that you can do with these, and it makes learning a little more interesting, and you stay away from the traditional side, and you kind of explore different ways to find out how you learn.
So, really, this grant, the grants we've had, have allowed us to develop the resources and the tools to transform our teaching. So, we are very, very grateful at Waukesha North for what we've been able to receive from the grant money that we've been able to receive through that foundation.
Thank you to the Waukesha Education Foundation for this wonderful grant so we were able to purchase these ramps and the carts and the motion sensors so we could transform our learning experience.
So, thank you to WEF for allowing us at this opportunity, and also, I know that I've seen many of the schoolroom members at our celebration of excellence, and there's so many great opportunities for us to really allow for the excellence of Waukesha to continue on through.
I can't thank you enough, and Kathy, I know you're on the board, and I'll just tell you a real quick story. But 12 years ago, I was one of the three who founded the WEF, Sally Nantrell and Jane Delzer and myself. And the first couple of meetings, it was just the three of us, and we looked at each other kind of like, "What are we doing? Is this ever going to go anywhere?" You know, it's so painful when you get started. Anyway, then, some wonderful other board members came along, and things have really taken off. But if we could have seen your presentation 12 years ago to know that this kind of thing was going to happen, you know, it would have lifted our spirits because it was very difficult, you know, at the beginning, just thinking, "Oh, you know, is this ever going to go anywhere?" And it's just wonderful to see what's happening, and I know the board is just terrific now. And I do go to these celebrations just to see some of the amazing things that get funded. So, thank you both.
Do you want to talk about the celebration of excellence real quick? Well, I'll just mention that there will be another celebration of excellence, November 2nd. I think in your packets, you have the brochure. It'll be at South High School, 2:00 to 5:00. A lot of the teachers and their students come to that celebration, set up something like this and show it, so it's a good chance to see and celebrate and honor our teachers and students that have been involved in all these activities. And then, we will honor some community members at the celebration as well, and so, we hope you'll find time to join us that day. It's an exciting afternoon.
Other questions and comments? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I remember, you know, years ago, North High School's always pretty impressive to me, and my children went to West, but a lot of things over the years at North. One of the things we did post-referendum was invest in reconditioning the science labs at North. It wasn't on the rest-fulendum list, but the teachers came to us and said, "Come see our labs and tell us we don't need help." And so, it was a pretty compelling argument they made in that. But I think one of the most special things is when a community or when people donate to help the system. That doesn't happen in a lot of places. It doesn't happen in a lot of other countries. They expect everybody to just get by with what the public sector gives them, and I think it works better in a way when the private sector people give and help develop stuff like this.
We've given over $135,000 in grants in those 12 years, and our goal is to have a million dollars in the foundation, and we're getting close. We aren't too terribly far away from reaching that goal. So, we have a couple of events each year to raise money, and there are donors who come to us and come to the Waukesha Community Foundation looking for places to donate their money, and the foundation helps us and assists us and helps people who are looking for that to give back. We have a website, and a lot of people contact us through the website and get involved. But our big money raisers are a golf outing in the summer and then the Run-Walk in the spring that's been at North High School the last four years. So, we'll have another one next April. So, our dates for our events, and everything's on the website. If you just go to the Waukesha Education Foundation, lots of information about the grants that we've given and about the events that are coming up are posted on the website.
And the other...
Go ahead, Kurt.
The other thing is, I get a kick out of the data acquisition tools. I'm dating myself, but we didn't have all that stuff. And I still remember when I started working and wanted to collect data, I said, "How do you do this?" You know, because we didn't have the tools. And so, it's a whole different world today, and in this world, people are expecting you to use those tools and include those tools in your offerings and things like that because that's the world we live in. And certainly, you learn more about the world by being able to do it and feel it and see it, and that just wasn't available years ago. So, you need resources, you need great teachers, and you need motivated students. And if you can get all that together, then you got a winner, huh?
Mrs. Brusink?
Thank you. Ms. Voit, what an exciting teacher you are. Really. Physics is certainly not anything that I've ever took in high school or college. Thank God, I don't know that I could learn it, but from you and your presentation tonight, I think it's possible that I might have been able to learn physics. So, thank you for all you do, and thank you for your creative ideas in, you know, thinking up what you would like to have the foundation provide for you that doesn't just naturally come in a physics classroom. So, I'm very proud of what you're doing and how lucky those kids at North are. And then, I'd like to further state that Mr. Como has appointed me to be the board representative to the Waukesha Education Foundation, and I'm extremely honored to participate in these meetings, et cetera. This is such a marvelous group of people, so dedicated to our students and education in Waukesha, and they work very, very hard to provide classrooms with materials for projects, et cetera, that just don't normally come with the budget that we have every year. So, thank you, Kathy, and to all the members of that board. I'm just so impressed with what you do, your dedication and your caring, so thank you. And then, again, I'd just like to double what Kathy is saying. Please come to the Celebration of Excellence. It's just going to be an outstanding time for you to see all the exceptional things that are going on in our district because of the foundation. So, thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also thank the foundation for their involvement in extracurriculars, as I might call them, because these are opportunities that students are having that normally wouldn't be funded, and they're put out there by a lot of the faculty. And Greta, I got to thank you for going above and beyond to try and seek out the technology that helps to not only make you a model educator, but also to bring your students into a world outside of the classroom. Using that squad car, wonderful. That was just, that was terrific.
I thought it was pretty cool. I mean, maybe happy.
Yeah. Well, we could see the excitement in your students, and that's, you know, that's truly the highest compliment that can be paid to an educator is the feedback that they get from their students. And, you know, I use sensors as a regular part of my job, and data collection information is, you know, really critical in some of our engineering applications, same thing. So, these students are beginning to see another side of what they can potentially do for careers outside of just what they see offered in a college curriculum, in an offering for a potential career field. So, I think you're on the right track, and my compliments to you and continued success and encouragement.
Mrs. Langill?
Just very quickly, I've already thanked you, and I just want to thank you again. But just to mention, because Kurt reminded me in his discussion, when you say you're almost to the million, I mean, I can't tell you how exciting that is because I remember, again, these early meetings, we had 17,000 left when we passed that double referendum, and that's what we started with, you know, which we were excited, but we just hadn't really generated where to go with it. And that was from the referendum of 2001. We had 17,000 left, and the WCCF wrote us, you know, the check to the WEF, and we thought, you know, "We want to get grants out there. We want to do this." But now, just to see what's happening, you know, is, anyway, it's just so exciting. And I just want to point out, too, that our past board chair, Dan Warren, is going to be honored.
Correct.
At the Celebration of Excellence, and we're going to hear the wonderful South High School Orchestra, the South Drum Line, World Music Drumming. I mean, look at this, and everybody will be there. That's it.
Yeah, and Mrs. Gardner, you can correct me in any of the statements I'm about to make.
Okay.
But you've been on the board of Waukesha Education Foundation for a while, but my understanding is that we've handed out grants to, or Waukesha Education Foundation's handed out grants to virtually every school now, right? Not just the high schools, but...
Correct. Elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, the charter schools, that all the schools have applied and received grants. This year, there weren't as many grant applications as there had been the previous two years. I'm on the grant committee, so I'm familiar with all the grant submissions and what we've awarded grants to. And the previous two years, we had over 60 applications for grants. And this year, we gave a little over $15,000. And, you know, the more money we can build into the foundation with the formula we use, the more we'll be able to give out to teachers as startup funds for programs like this. They also have to have a way to sustain their programs because we don't continue to support those programs as they move forward. So, they have to look at how are they going to be able to sustain and maintain their programs and evaluate their programs. And one of the ways they evaluate it is by coming to the Celebration of Excellence and showing us their results and the kind of feedback they've gotten from their students. And so, it's one of the ways that we look at how effective the grants have been.
Okay. And a real quick question for Mrs. Voit. It sounds like you're sharing these gifts with other teachers, correct?
Yeah.
So, it's not like just yours, and you're just saying, "Hey, we have this as a resource," and people are thinking of new ideas then?
The last grant was through, it was the entire Science Department. So, we were with the entire Science Department on that grant. We're able to use this in every discipline, from physics to biology, chemistry, and our environmental studies. So, really finding a way to create a collaborative opportunity to really develop these skills, not just in physics, but all the way through their entire high school experience.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Mrs. Gardner, pass on to the Waukesha Education Foundation our gratitude, and you can share this at the next board meeting, the excitement of this evening.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing everybody in November.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our recognitions for the evening. We have two parts to this tonight. We're going to start with having our athletic directors step forward, Dan Domack, Brian Schley, and Kyle Lemieux.
Eye-hand and eye-foot coordination. That's great.
You bet. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to join you. On behalf of Dan and Brian and myself, we wanted to come before you tonight to share an update regarding the Fields of Many Dreams project. And really, our purpose would be twofold. First is to express our sincere gratitude for the support and commitment that we were able to experience from our district and from you as board members to help this dream really come to fruition. And second is to really give you an update on the progress of what this project looks like right now. If you drive past any of our three high schools, you'll see three fully operational synthetic turf fields. During the day, you might see our physical education students out there, maybe our marching band students. Of course, our athletic practices and competitions are going on as well. But it's truly an exciting time. I know as we've all interacted with our students, our coaches, our parents, it's like the smiles are stuck and they won't go away. And they just, they still can't believe how good they have it. And I think, from a broader context, too, because of what our district has been able to accomplish, we have quickly become the envy of our area when it comes to surrounding districts. And so, we're truly excited about the possibilities that, that lie within the next couple of years and decades of, of being able to have this incredible resource at our hands. But Glenn Norre told me the other day, he drove past South High School, and he was prompted to stop and ask the physical education students to leave when he realized it wasn't grass anymore, it was turf, and it was perfect, they could stay. A couple of weeks ago, I was driving out west, and it was a rainy Monday, and, you know, we have set rotations of which teams have their turn on the turf when. And I was just thrilled to look, and I saw the soccer team on one half of the field, the football team on the other half of the field. Coaches got together, worked it out, so all of our kids were safe and out of the mud. And just little things like that that are really starting to show through. And again, I think we've barely scratched the surface, but we are elated about where we stand now and really excited about what's to come. So, thank you to each of you.
Thank you for recognizing the board, I guess, is, that hasn't necessarily happened during this section, but truly, the recognition really goes out to this community. This has been a community-wide project, many people involved with this, and you three had a lot to do with this, too. So, it's really a thank, thanks goes out to everybody in the community. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now is the time where we recognize the employee of the month, and Chris Hedstrom will be announcing that. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Como. The Employee Recognition Award for October 2014 is being presented this evening to Lori Roth, who is here with me tonight. Lori started with the School District of Waukesha in nineteen ninety-nine. She is currently the Principal-Secretary at Hadfield Elementary School. Lori is a dedicated employee at Hadfield. She goes above and beyond in making sure Hadfield is up and running for the students, staff, and families. Lori is a problem solver. She is dedicated to her job and takes her responsibilities seriously. She anticipates necessary next steps. Lori worked tirelessly over the summer to help with the transition of new leadership at Hadfield. Lori is an employee who is dedicated to her work duties by providing support to the staff at Hadfield. Her accessibility, attention to detail, and follow-through is a comfort to all. Lori has embraced changes in technology and implemented a nearly paperless process for families during forms and fees days. She utilizes a Google form for parents to complete. This change has allowed the office to run in an efficient manner as the school year started. Lori has been able to search a spreadsheet generated from the Google form and cross-reference what families have not completed on the form. This has allowed Hadfield to have accurate information. She has shown a willingness to adapt to change and provide solutions in challenges that come up. In addition, she has reached out to community partners La Casa Esperanza, Women's Shelter, and Hebron House to help facilitate important partnerships with organizations that support Hadfield students and families. And I would like to say, the interactions I've had with Lori have been so professional. She is such a joy to get to know. I hope that you'll be able to stop in to Hadfield and meet with her from time to time. She is very professional, and I have highest respect for her and her abilities. So, on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate, congratulate Lori Roth on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award. Congratulations, Lori.
I just wanted to say thank you. I have been blessed to have a brand-new principal this year, Mr. Blessington, and he has made all the difference to the world in our school. It's a joy to go to work every day. I want to thank my family for coming and the rest of the Hadfield team that came to support me tonight. I really appreciate that. Hadfield is a great school. We have wonderful staff. We have children. Some struggle, it's, it's, it's a good school to work in, and I am just blessed to be able to go there every day, and I appreciate this award. It's very humbling. Thank you.
Mrs. Roth, thank you. You're in one of those positions that's, I call it a linchpin position. All of parents and families know how important, the important role that you play, and, and also the staff that you work with and all the teachers and administrators. So, thank you for what you do. People like you really make this, this district click, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for the award.
Okay, we're going to move on to our student representative reports. Tonight, we have Waukesha West giving their report, Apurva Dwan, and Brandon, I'm gonna try. Poybandit? Poybandit?
Not quite.
Well, I'm gonna let you introduce yourself when you come forward, Brandon, or how to say your last name, at least. Now, you're Kat's brother, right?
Yeah.
So, can I call you Kat's brother? That's easier. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Apurva Dwan, and-
And I'm Brandon Poybondit, and we're both seniors at Waukesha West High School, so.
We've just prepared a little presentation for you, talking about what our school has accomplished so far this year. All right, let's start off with marching band. We recently had the Fox River Invitational. It was two weekends ago. It was on Sunday. We didn't compete ourselves, but we did get a score, and that's, was our first competition for this year. And this past weekend, we had two competitions. One was at Greendale, where we placed third, and another was at Wisconsin Lutheran, where we placed second and received a caption in visual. On top of that, we're having our Wednesday night rehearsals, one which I'm missing currently, but that's all right. Those are for, those are from six to nine, but we also have sectionals beforehand, where we're working with our individualized instrument, working with that group specifically. This weekend, we also have two more competitions at Cudahy and Fort Atkinson, and in the next, in another week, we have state. So, the season's going by fast this year. All right, our next topic is cross-country. Our girls' cross-country team recently won the Eagle Invitational at UW Parkside, and the most important part of this was that they beat Arrowhead, who hasn't been beat for the past three years. So, that's a first. Last year, they got ninth at state, and they're hoping to improve their score this year. Boys' cross-country is also doing well.
Girls' volleyball right now is currently two and three in conference. They won a tournament this past week, and they played KM.
Yeah, it was yesterday.
Okay, it was yesterday. And then, boys' volleyball is led by, just recently, they voted for the captains, and their captains are Jack Wil and Aaron Turner, two very, very gifted players, and they're hoping to lead their team towards another run at state.
Sectionals was today for girls' tennis. Overall, they received fifth at conference, but after sectionals, our one-doubles has moved on to state, and possibly our one-singles. I'm not sure on that, but definitely our one-doubles, Lenny Lindblom and Ashley Solberg. They're moving on to state.
Just yesterday, boys', our boys' soccer team had their game that determined them as the classic eight-conference champions, and they will be moving on to the regional competition, I believe, if I recall correctly. They won the game yesterday in a four-zero, so it was a very convincing win.
Our football team is doing quite well this year. We beat Arrowhead at our homecoming game. The score was twenty-four to twenty-one. They're playing strong. That's all I can say, after four years of being with them. This is one of their stronger years.
Girls' golf is made up of three schools?
All three high schools, actually.
Yeah. We're kind of looked at as the underdog this season, I suppose, by other teams because of our loss of one of our very good players, Emily Jors, who graduated two years ago. We're, we got third at regionals, and then, just recently, we missed state by two strokes, so.
For cheer, the competition season has just started. They had a homecoming routine planned, which they performed both at the game and at the pep rally recently. And one of the most important things for them this year is that they're hosting a competition for the very first time at Waukesha West. And Palms also had a homecoming routine, which was a success, and now they're working towards their competition season.
Key Club has been doing fundraising to hopefully send another thirty kids to decon this year by doing Teacher Sundays, which is like ice cream Sundays for teachers and students. And, and they're trying to get more connected with other key clubs in our school district, so maybe like the Key Club at North and South, perhaps, and maybe CMH. And then, our Interact Club, which is headed by me, actually, just had our Apple Harvest Festival, and, or we, we helped at the Apple Harvest Festival just recently, this past two weekends ago. And then, this next Saturday, we're going to be helping out at Redstone Nature Center at the Halloween event there. And then, in November, we are hoping to work with other students and other people in our community with the fall yard cleanup.
And we're also trying to connect with NHS a little bit this year. I'm vice president of NHS and vice president of Interact, so I've tried to combine the two clubs. It makes it easier for the people in NHS to get their volunteer hours through Interact. In drama, they are working on a play, a one-act play called The Monkey's Paw, and their sectionals are November eighth, and then state on November twenty-first to twenty-second. They have been going to sectionals and to state for the past few years, I believe. And they're also working on their fall, uh, fall play, Frankenstein. Lines have been memorized, according to many of the members, and the sets are in the process of being built still. But they're right on track to perform November eighth, or sixth to the eighth. Our NHS, as I said, we're very connected with Interact this year, but we're currently working on our school and community service project, which is a winter apparel drive. Nothing has been completely finalized, but this will be taking place in November. And we're getting our hours done through Interact. A lot of people have been joining Key Club as well, which is another volunteering club, and it's going strong. We, not many people have turned in hours, but people have started at least.
Okay, so we have four major, so the way we're running home, our student council this year is we're trying to get more involved with our school. I'm vice president, Apurva's the president. So, this past, like September, we were really focused on homecoming. This October, we're hoping to do some mascot fundraising for our school to, to hopefully boost school spirit for future years. In November, we organized a blood drive at Waukesha West, and I recommend that you all come down for that, when that's time for that. And then, December, we have our food drive, which is through the Salvation Army, right?
Yep, it's through the Salvation Army. We're competing for the Golden Cup.
The Golden Can?
Can, can.
The, last year, we, we-
Seven thousand?
No, it was around there. We raised sixty-seven hundred food items, non-perishable items, such as like canned goods and like instant rice and products of that sort, and then we donated all that to the Salvation Army.
And we also collect money as well, and sometimes we donate the money directly, other times, we take a little trip to Walmart and buy whatever the Salvation Army needs.
So, we're both part of the academic decathlon team, as you can see in the pictures of me in the back, her in the front, and us lined up. That was at our national competition. That was towards the end of April of last year. It was held in Honolulu, Hawaii, actually. And this year, we're preparing, we're working very hard, and we have our first competition at Carroll University, I believe, in the first or second week of November. And after that, it would be the regional competition in January, then the state competition, which would determine if we go to the national competition again in March. And this year, the national competition is held in Garden Grove, California. So, we've been preparing very hard and meticulously, writing our speeches and practicing our interviews to get that prepared in order to hopefully make it to nationals once again.
Yeah, they've actually changed the rules this year. Rather than having the top two teams in the state go to nationals, it's only the team who wins state. So, we're definitely going for that title. Homecoming week, it was a long week, it was stressful, but it was a success. Monday started off with powder puff football. There was a lot of support there this year compared to usual. The stands weren't filled like a normal football game, but there were parents, there were students who came out in the evening to support girls playing football.
I was working the scoreboard, and I'd like to take credit for that right now.
I think I was doing a little more by playing, but it's all right. Tuesday, we had our hallway decorating. Seniors, our theme was blackout. Juniors had Under the Sea. Sophomores had Pirates, and freshmen luau. Our overall theme for homecoming was keep calm and hula on, and all the hallways turned out very well. On Friday was our pep rally and our football game against Arrowhead, which we won twenty-four to twenty-one. And during the pep rally, Palms performed, Cheer performed, and this was done during the football game as well. And on Saturday, student council set up for the dance, and then, of course, there was a dance later in the evening. And this year, over six hundred people showed up, which is actually one of our records. We were anticipating more four hundred, high four hundreds, low five hundreds, but we broke six hundred this year.
Really quick, wait, before we even move on. Also during the pep rally, we introduced the Waukesha West Hall of Fame, which is to sort of highlight the achievements of the Waukesha West alumni. For instance, one of them became a very, very good, very good competing, was it track? Was it Emily Ramsey did?
Yep.
And then, another one went into the Peace Corps after college, and it was, we had four of them, I can't recall their achievements, unfortunately, but they were all very notable, and it was, it was achievements of that, like, and we're hoping to add more alumni in the future.
Yep, it's something that we're planning on doing every year now. And spirit days were class color, tie dye, pajama, beach, and then Friday, we ended up with school spirit.
I guess we're gonna talk, we're gonna talk about our iPad experience so far. Personally, I've been using it a lot, actually, more than I thought I would, because at first I was skeptical, because I'm very, I'm very focused on like, ah, I have to have the teacher in front of me. I'm very used to that environment. But actually, having the iPad in front of me was convenient, because for moments where teachers asked to pull up handouts, and it's a normal situation where they would have handed out papers, I could just go onto Blackboard and log in and then download whatever PDF I needed and wrote on that. And even when I wanted to work on paper, I still had that luxury of being able to write in my notebook. And I think having the iPads there to reduce the amount of paper costs and paper waste into the environment was very handy and very convenient for us.
I personally was very skeptical of the iPads. I prefer a laptop normally, and I didn't know how it would work with all of my classes, especially AP classes, since they're so rigorous to the book, there's a certain amount of information that has to be covered. So, I was unsure if iPads would benefit us in any way, but I have used them. I've used them mostly in my English and Spanish courses, and they've come, they're very useful when it comes to annotating anything. Rather than printing out, let's say, like last week, we had thirty-five pages that we had to annotate for English. Rather than printing that out, everyone having their own copy, we just pulled it up on our iPad, could write right on there, rather than even taking out a spiral or anything. You could do it right on the iPad, and that was one of, that's definitely one of the benefits that I saw during the first two months that we've started using them. And it does help that we don't have to carry around as many textbooks. A lot of the information is directly on the iPad, but I still prefer laptops in some cases, but the iPads are definitely shaping out to be better than I expected. And that's it.
All right, thank you for that report. Do we have any questions, Dr. Langill?
Thank you both very much. I have two, just quick questions. Um, you did a very thorough job, so I'm really not criticizing you at all, but choir orchestra coming along okay too?
Yep.
All right, so next time, maybe in spring, when you come back or whatever, update us on the, and then what are the plans you two have for next year, for college?
I've just started applying. Um, I, the only in-state school I'm looking at is Madison. My dream school would be either Johns Hopkins or Stanford, but I'm applying still.
I'm just applying kinda everywhere. I've, I'm almost up with my application for UW-Madison. I finished it, mine for University of Minnesota, because it was really fast. Uh, I'm looking at University of Oregon, OSU, and, and like some California schools, like, I'm, I'm very skeptical. I'm thinking that's like the cost, and I have to be careful about my parents' money, because they're paying for my first two years, and then it's on me, so I have to be careful with that. And then I'm looking, I'm also looking at Syracuse and like Columbia and New York, because I really like the city environment more, so.
Okay, well, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brusink?
Now, thank you for your very thorough report and your enthusiasm and your school spirit, and we're very proud of West High School and everything that you accomplished over there, so keep up the good work and glad to hear that you got more kids coming to football games. Get that going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know about the great things that are happening at West. We'll see you in two or three months, two or three months. I'm not exactly sure where you're up on the schedule next, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, we're at, uh, now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak to the board. As has been, uh, past practice, each individual be- will be limited to three minutes of time in order for us to hear from our community and then to get on to our agenda, uh, that's before us. Barbara Zink will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes in order to allow wrap-up of their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit of three minutes, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from our meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, uh, at this time, I ask that you silence your cellphones. Tonight, we have five speakers that have signed up, and our first speaker is, uh, Melina Coplin. And then on deck, we'll have Karen Testman.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Melina Coplin. I speak to you tonight in my capacity as a citizen of this district, a parent, but most, most importantly, as a professional educator, who spent much of my twenty-four-year career as a teacher and library media specialist in this district. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the work of the Consideration Committee. I know I speak for many of my colleagues when I say that we appreciate your professionalism, and especially the amount of thought that was invested in the process. Fellow parents, I have heard your concerns about wanting to protect your children from ideas that are not in line with your family morals and expectations. While I ex- I respect your intentions, I can say with confidence that within my own experiences as a foster parent and a teacher, your kids know your expectations and beliefs, and it's very difficult for them to consider ideas that are outside of their family experiences. I have taught children from kindergarten through seniors in high school and have seen this at every level. New ideas are difficult to accept. Board members, I ask you to consider this. Walt Disney is credited as saying, "There is more treasure in books than in all the pirates loot on Treasure Island, and best of all, you can enjoy these riches every day of your life." Generally, we think that means we can visit wonderful places and meet friendly people that we might not get the opportunity to meet in our everyday lives. What inspires me most about that thought, however, is that not all of the experiences we get from books are warm and fuzzy. Some of them are cold and lonely and frightening, but I know I would rather experience these feelings, reading a book with trusted family, friends, and teachers than alone in real life. For decades, students have been reading about World War II. I think we can agree that when we read stories about Germany during that time, it's not because we want the reader to condone the principles of the Nazi Party, but because we want them to understand extreme racism from the point of view of the persecuted and its effect on a society. So when I suggest a book like Looking for Alaska, it's not because I want the reader to abuse substances or engage in frivolous relationships, it's because I know this book will demonstrate the emptiness and helplessness that participation in these types of behaviors can induce. When I suggest a book like The Chinese Handcuffs, it's not because I want the reader to be cruel to animals or commit suicide or sexually abuse a family member, it's because I know this book will show that with the help of trusted adults, young people suffering emotional pain can control their reaction to their circumstances, and that they do not have to be isolated by these types of issues. When I suggest a book like The Kite Runner, it's not because I want the reader to view violence as a solution to social conflict.
Thirty seconds left.
Parents and board members, I truly understand that books like these are not appropriate for all students. As a professional librarian, I worked very hard trying to find a good match for every student. However, the decision before the board today is to take access to these books away from all students. I hope you see that these books, while they may be challenging and even at times unpleasant, are treasures. In the vicarious experience they provide for our students,
Time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Coplin. Next, we have Karen Testman, and after Karen, we have Nancy Alt.
Thank you.
Welcome.
When he was a freshman, my son came home from school one day and told me his class was reading a book about a cat that got put in a sack, thrown against a hard surface until it was bloody, and then killed with a tire iron. I was shocked at the violence, but I did nothing. A few days later, he told me the same book now was talking about a father going into his little girl's bedroom and molesting her. So this time, I decided to look the book up on Amazon dot com, and I read the first negative review. It talked about the gang rape of a teenage girl in a biker bar, to the point where she fell off a pool table, unconscious, never to be heard from again. This was all in the book Chinese Handcuffs. This book was chosen by my son's teacher for her English class to read. I was never given a warning about the book's extreme violence and brutality. In fact, I was never given a list of the books she planned to, for her class to read. And as a matter of fact, in my eleven years of parent-teacher conferences I've attended, I've never been given a list of books that any class has planned to read. And to tell you the truth, this was never an issue until now, because I trusted the school system. I trusted that you would choose age-appropriate books for my child to read. I trusted that the school libraries would contain age-appropriate materials. Imagine how blindsided I felt when I found out that my freshman was expected to be reading books about gang rape, animal brutality, siblings blowing their brains out, and fathers molesting their daughters. These are not topics for fifteen-year-olds to be reading. These are adult topics to be read by adults who choose to read them. And now, in his sophomore year, my son would be required to read The Kite Runner, which contains several incidences of boys and men raping boys, as well as brutal beatings, executions, and suicide. Your board approved this book for eleventh graders, and now it's been moved to tenth grade because of a change in the curriculum. Again, these are adult topics to be read by adults, not by teenagers, especially without parental consent. And I know there's a right to freedom of the press, but that doesn't mean that every book ever written needs to be in our school libraries. Somewhere, you, the school board, need to draw the line. How much extreme violence, brutality, animal cruelty, and sexuality are you going to allow?
Thirty seconds left.
Because the more you expose our kids to it, the more you just desensitize them to it. Why do you find it necessary to repeatedly expose them to gang rapes, brutal beating, suicide, sexuality, and animal cruelty? Let the parents decide when their kids are ready to discuss these adult topics, rather than forcing these topics on the kids. There needs to be a well-defined line between acceptable teen topics and adult topics, and you, the school board, need to define that line.
Time.
And parents should be made aware of that line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Testman. Nancy Alt is next, and after Nancy, we will have Ellen Cox.
I'm actually one of the original writers of the policy sixty-one sixty-one G, um, titled Guidelines for Selection, Approval, Maintenance, and Removal of Educational Materials. Writing this policy was a lengthy process with input from every level in our school district at that time, including our superintendent and our Board of Education, and, um, we consulted with the Department of Public Instruction. We had, um, consulting from the Cooperative Children's Book Center in Madison, and actually, if the process is followed correctly, it does work quite well. Materials are not purchased just randomly in this district. There is a selection process that's followed, and if the merits outweigh everything else in a book, and it has met all of the criteria, then it is purchased. And an example of Looking for Alaska has lots of good reviews, it's won seven awards, and it's an outstanding book. I myself read it once, and then I realized what the challenge was, and I thought, I must have missed something, and I read it a second time, and I still, um, feel that the book should be in our schools. Um, I attended the meetings with the Consideration Committee, and I have to commend them. Um, under the leadership of Mr. LaBord, I was totally impressed with the way they followed the process. Their diligence, their professionalism, their unbiased comments, and evaluation of not only Looking for Alaska, but of the other two titles also. There's a huge difference between selection and censorship, and just one of the criteria is, in selection, you look at something as a whole. That's what the selector does. A censor just picks out certain parts of it and does not look at the whole part. We're always allowing students to have alternative books, and I'm asking you tonight, please don't vote to censor these books. Um, please keep them in our schools, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Alt. Next, we have Ellen Cox, and after Ellen, we have Paul Reese.
Yes, hi. I have notes, so bear with me. I usually don't have them. Um, we're here tonight to make a decision on this book, and, um, and it's sitting on all the library shelves in the middle school and high schools in the city of Waukesha. And, and the committee did, did read the book and, and considered it to be a great piece of literature, um, by those who voted to keep it on the shelves. And I hope that you've all read it and, and disagree with their party. Uh, Looking for Alaska.
I didn't know which book.
I'm sorry. And, um, so the committee agreed to keep it on the shelves, and, and I hope that you've all read it and decided that it wasn't appropriate for the, the middle school and high school. It's one thing for a committee of adults to read a book that is filled with over one hundred profanity words from front cover to back cover, along with descriptions of oral sex, words that I'm not allowed to use here as an adult, but we're handing a book to a child and saying, "You can't say them, but you can read them." I find that very hypocritical, and I think, what are you going to expect out of those children when they are reading that book? When you're telling me I can't use that, those words, but I can let my child use them in a book. Um, I would not read that book with any of you. I would be embarrassed, um, of the content, so I would never say those things out loud here, um, and I would not want any child to be able to read it. This is in middle school, starting at, I think, eleven years old. I think there are some kids in middle school that are eleven. Um, but anyway, so I, I find it very, very inappropriate for, for eleven and up. I, I find it something that a parent, I am all about reading. I love to read. My children love to read. My family loves to read. Give the parent the choice to let their child read this book, not the school. It's not the school's decision. Um, we entrust the school to teach our children. Um, the physics demonstration was amazing. I'm way beyond me. But it was, it, that's teaching. Um, handing them a book that, um, that talks about sex, drugs, suicide, is something that a parent can make that decision on, and I'm asking you to consider that. I know that the Waukesha School District can do much better than Looking for Alaska. There's so many more books that are out there that are so appropriate, that, uh, reading about the, the Holocaust, i- is it, is it gory? Is it sad? Is it scary somewhat? Yes, but I have no problem with that, because it was something that happened in life, and children, young adults should know about these things, but eleven-year-olds
Time.
knowing about oral sex? No, I don't think so, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox. And then we have Paul Reese as our fifth speaker.
Paul Reese, um, first, I want to apologize to Mr. O'Brien. Last month, I stood up and said that he said to me that he endorsed this book or in favor of it. That's not exactly what Mr. O'Brien said. He said he thought this one had just about as much sexual content as this one. And, um, it's like comparing, I would say, Schindler's List to Nine and a Half Weeks. I mean, both of them have things in it, but they're two different, totally different topics. Um, I would say you have Songs of Solomon, which is poetic metaphors, and you have Ezekiel oh, chapter sixteen, which is some pretty strong language in it, and it is very condemning of things. It's used to condemn some things. Um, this is absolutely not. As a matter of fact, the best part of it, the best argument I'd have is the back of it. I mean, before the kid does sex and, and drinking and smoking, his life is one big non-event. See, if you don't do these things, life really doesn't matter, I guess. And, um, I did those things, and I can tell you, my biggest event is my daughter in my life, and that, there are all those other things that I did in life really were passe and really were fools, uh, foolish things I did. That's why I despise him. You know, when I got up here, I, you know, when I was, when Mr. Cuomo was introducing everyone, he said not to read, not to use any type of language. I just simply read from this book last week, last month, and because I read from this book last month, Mr. Gray came up to me and said, "You're not to, to use that kind of language from here, because FCC rules." And Mr. Cuomo gave a strict warning about swearing from here, and this is in our classroom, so it's not okay for me to say it from here, but these people believe it's okay to read in my classroom? I, I, I just don't see the logic there. I don't see the reasoning that you can say that, "I, I cannot read this from here, but you can read it to my kid in, under any circumstance." Get up every day and I put on big boy pants, and I'm an adult. People do that every day with, with movies. Every week, movies come out, and someone sits by and rates them. Someone sits by and says, "It contains this kind of content, it gets an R. If it contains this kind of content, it gets a PG. If it contains this, it gets a G." Big boy pants, people put forth a criteria and a standards, and a set of standards that are, have to be met in order for something to be allowed.
Thirty seconds left.
And this school district and the people on that board have no standards. It is beyond me, it fears me that I have to send my child to school with these people, that their standards are so low that they would put this in a middle school, that they are so perverse, their mind is so gone, that they think that it's okay. You know, the more we become subjected to sexual content, the more permissible it seems to be. You know, my grandmother's age, who was one hundred and one.
Time.
Uh, next month, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. At this time, we're going to move on to our minute approval. Uh, we have minutes for September tenth, twenty fourteen. That was a public hearing minutes. We also have, uh, on September tenth, the regular board meeting minutes, and at this time, I'd be looking for And at this time, I'd be looking for a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Brusink to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Langill. Is there any discussion? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Cuomo.
Aye. Sue passes nine-zero. We'll move on to our communications. Mr. Gray.
I have one letter this evening from Sally Machalko, who's the president of the Plough Share Center. She is thanking us and commending us for a group of outstanding students from the Waukesha South Key Club. Fifteen of these students provided some volunteer assistance at a recent fashion show fundraiser for them, and it turned out very well for them, and it was a good opportunity for our South students as well.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we typically have Mrs. Brusink give her Waukesha Education Foundation report. I don't know if you have anything to add at this time, Barb. It was pretty thorough this evening.
Just please come to the celebration of excellence. There's going to be wonderful food to eat, wonderful people to interact with, and to see phenomenal projects and programs that the students have developed. So hope to see each one of you there.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our safety committee report. That's given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. We met this morning. At this meeting, we had some great discussions, partially because of the presence of a representative from the fire department and our own Joe Cook. In that, we reviewed and accepted the accident reports for our students and our staff. Discussion was held regarding the procedures that are to be followed by our staff for the workers' compensation, injuries, accidents, and separated from the student involvement injuries where they've been involved with the staff. Joe is going to look into how we process those and separate them better. They're all lining up with the same category right now, and it's not necessarily the best way to handle it. Another item for Joe, Joe is going to be pursuing the completion of our district's crisis management plans. We've been talking about that for several months now, and it's been slow work to, is a work in progress, but Joe is targeting completion of this for January. We gave Joe so much work this morning, we aren't sure he's going to come to any more meetings, by the way. But we do really appreciate his resources. With the participation of the fire department representative, fire department representative, it is a full moon if you forgot that. We had a very good conversation about the required practices for schools for fire, tornado, and lockdown drills. Though we are doing a good job, and we are improving in areas that need improvement, there's still much to be done. Just as a heads up, there's a TV station that's currently reviewing what we're doing, and of course, we know that often the media is there to, not to report the news, but to try and make some news. So we aren't sure exactly where that's going, but we feel we do a good job. Our next safety committee meeting will be held in November.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. You might as well roll into the charter school update.
Right, into the charter school. Boy, that's so convenient. Charter school report, now that the school year is beginning to get underway, just a couple of comments on several of our schools regarding our engineering academy and our health academy. You probably all know this already, but it's worth putting on the air. Both of those high schools fell into the significantly exceed expectations category of high schools, and that's the highest report card level you can attain. The engineering academy is number forty-eight in Newsweek's top high schools in the nation, and had a very good ACT scoring with over twenty-seven. So just, as again, you heard this before, but it's worth reminding the public about.
Barbara, can I add that actually, the engineering academy is number three in the state in terms of overall report card score.
Good stuff, guys. Couple of other schools have reported in to me. Some of you, the Magna School, is off to a fine start with a new partnership. They have a national partnership with the Kennedy Performing Arts Center in Washington, DC, where they will have access to some resources and professional development for one of, for our staff, from one of the nation's top arts organizations. Our Harvey Phillips Alternative School, two pieces of paper here because this came in very late, but just some numbers for you. Harvey Phillips is currently serving over one-hundred-and-forty students. The staff, the students, and visitors have all made very positive comments about our move to the new location. If you're not familiar, they are going to be in the, what, the White Rock Building. And they would like to publicly thank Glenn Norther and his team for the excellent work they did in getting ready over the summer. Also, just to add to that, this may be one of the last months you hear the term Harvey Phillips because that is a billing, and the staff over there and the students over there are looking at renaming it and coming out with some public relations materials, publishing information that will better explain what this school is really about. So I will be reporting to you on that. It's probably going to go through CNI, and I'll probably be reporting on that next month. Fight Academy over at Horning Middle School has ninety students this year. We added a grade this year because last year it was six and seven, this year it's six, seven, and eight. So they are growing. They've hosted two days of visitors from around the state and from the University of Wisconsin in Madison. And Mr. Wagner says, "We would love for all school board members to please come over for a visit and contact Mark if you're interested. He'll set it up." On the same note, we have the Quest Academy, or Quest Program, which is running over at Butler. Just a simple note there that they held an open house last week, the new area that they're in, and it was also remodeled over the summer. In my mind, it's very great. And if you haven't had a chance to get over there to see it at that open house, contact Jason, and he'll get you in. And lastly, the E-Achieve School. I've got more here than I want to say. Let me edit it real quickly in my mind. We did the third Friday count, it's seven-hundred-and-twenty-four people, which is down from previous year. And Rick is pointing out that a few other virtual schools, charter schools, have also reported decline in enrollment, don't really have a understanding of why right now. We're still above the break-even point, so it's not a panic situation. They are still getting some open enrollment applications. That is now an extended period where you can get into that. So we aren't sure the exact number yet, but we'll report back on that. And E-Achieve, the elementary program, did open its doors this year with sixteen students, and they have a couple of applications still coming in from people who are, in one case, in Honduras, who would like their child to attend our E-Achieve Elementary School. And that concludes my, yes.
Sue, I just have one clarification. Harvey Phillips being renamed, we have some people working on it, but we have a process to, that needs
This is a charter school, remember. Governance Board will handle that. We will have, we will have to deal with
Thank you for that clarification.
We'll have to deal with contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that, that's where you're saying it comes through
I don't think you're going to have any issues with
Comes through CNI then. Comes through CNI.
Yeah, we'll, you'll be involved in it.
Okay.
It's not a big shake. Don't worry about it.
Question, Mr. Baumgart, please. Can kids go into E-Achieve anytime during the school year, or is there just a window when they can go in?
Well, there is, there is that regular window, but there is some extension to that. I'm going to defer to either Joe or Ryan to discuss how that extension, is there certain situations have to be in to get into the extension?
Mr. Cook?
There is the alternate open enrollment application that students from other school districts can use to access a public school middle of the year, which has really extended open enrollment to a twelve-month cycle instead of just two months in, from February to April.
Okay. And if a student drops out of our E-Achieve, could they come back in at a later time, or is it usually you drop out, that's it?
Well, most situations, if they drop out, it's because they aren't surviving in that environment.
Sure, I understand.
And we would normally not entertain them coming back.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And those students, there is the participation component, which acts as attendance. And if they're non-participants, they're returned back to their resident district.
Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Which, I'm going to, Rick has been dealing with DPI on this because this is the reason the DPI does not score well on the state report card, quite simply because those kids are returning, and therefore, they're dropouts from our school.
Yeah.
It makes no sense because we're doing the right thing by sending them back to their home district, and we are penalized for it. And we continue to work with DPI on that without a lot of positives.
I've got a question that just come up, and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart.
Dr. Langill?
Thank you. Just a very quick, really, thank you to a woman on our staff named Faith Linsica, who is the effectiveness coach at STEM, several STEM. And she spoke yesterday at a group I was with and got lots of great questions. People are extremely interested. And she just did a super, super job of presenting STEM and what it means, and I just want to mention that because she's a great voice for STEM. Not only her experience as a teacher, but she has three sons who have either gone through or are in STEM, and she was able to work that into the presentation. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Ellen.
Yep, she's great.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Bill, for that report. We'll move on to board action on the appeal of the considerations committee's review of the contested books, Looking for Alaska, The Kite Runner, and Chinese Handcuffs. Now, the summer three books currently held in our school libraries or used as part of English curriculum were challenged by parents and removed, were challenged by parents to be removed from our schools. Per Board Policy sixty-one sixty-one G, a consideration committee was formed to review these books and make a recommendation on keeping the books in our schools, removing the books from our schools, or modifying their use. The consideration committee voted to maintain all three books in our schools. Board Policy sixty-one sixty-one G also provides for an appeal of the consideration committee's decision to the Board of Education. The decision on all three books were appealed to the Board of Education, and the board will now take up the appeal on these books at this time. Are there any questions or concerns from any of our board members as we begin this Mr. O'Brien?
A few days ago, I asked Superintendent Gray to check into legal implications regarding the actions we could possibly undertake tonight, mainly because I was just playing internet lawyer and reading some of the stuff, and I figured a layperson paying an internet lawyer can get in a lot of trouble, so I thought we should check with counsel, which he's done. When you, when you go through the situation that we find ourselves in, which is books on our shelves that are already there, approved in some cases by our curriculum and instruction committee, used in, used by our teachers, and further validated by the consideration committee process, it makes it a much more difficult task for a board member to, or a board collectively, to remove or even label such a book without being challenged legally. Now, you may win the challenge, but that has not been the case in a number of cases, and it would probably be appealed. When we look at the advice that's been given to us is that to remove a book like any of these books, we'd have to consider the total context of the book, as the consideration committee has done. We can't just remove it because it would be, I gave an example of one case that was anti-Christian and anti-Semite. A school board removed the book for that reason, and the US Supreme Court ruled that they were wrong. It was violation of First Amendment rights. So it puts this board in a difficult position if we should choose to remove the books or make any modifications to how they currently are presented. I think it puts them in a more difficult position because we've gone through the policy as we have set up long ago, and the professionals that we put in charge of this have stated that they believe the books should remain as they are. I just wanted to cover those topics with the board as a whole and for the public that's here tonight.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Baumgart?
Yeah, I have a concern. We got a document here today from the attorneys that referenced this issue, and in there, they say that it's important that the board members have taken the time to read the books before they consider removing them, if it's not practical, and there's some more things in there. I would have, I've read two of the books, and I have not been able to read the third one yet. And I'm uncomfortable at this point with voting on the one I haven't been able to read yet. And I know I should have, but it, you know, other things got in the way. So just from my own perspective, I have difficulty evaluating one of the books at this point.
Dr. Langill?
Thank you. Well, referencing the attorney viewpoint, and I really appreciate it, getting that information in terms of, you know, where the courts have been on this as far as civil liberties and operations of school boards. And I've read all three, though the third one, I have to say, the Chinese one, I haven't read the entire book, but almost all of it. And the other two, I've read all. Like Bill, I mean, I thought I should. I think that that's certainly the issue in front of us tonight, and if we decide to vote, I'm prepared to vote. But I also think a sort of sub-issue, which we've looked at, and I think it kind of keeps rearing its head, is not just the adoption of books and their availability in libraries or their use in courses, but when they're used in a course, we need to emphasize, I think, to our parents that there are alternatives and that this book will be used, parents could get a book list. When my two daughters were in an AP English class at South, we got a list of all the books they were going to be reading that semester. So I'm surprised if that doesn't happen, but maybe it doesn't. And then if I, as a parent, you know, wanted to read those or look at them, I obviously could, and then if I wanted to substitute, I could ask. So I mean, our parents do have that right, but we have to make sure that we, you know, obviously meet our obligation, which might be to share book lists with parents and give them a kind of forewarning. So I mean, I think that's kind of issue number two, that we won't necessarily address by a vote, but that we really have to be aware of, and we have to be proactive and encourage our teachers to be proactive, because if a parent feels very strongly that that should not be read by their son or daughter, then we have granted them, as part of our policies, that right to get it substituted. So that's my point, is just that we have kind of two issues in front of us, one of which we may vote on tonight, but the other one, I just want to highlight because I think it is crucial as far as how parents feel in our district in terms of use of material.
Okay. Just for our audience's sake, and I'd like to just go through what we can do this evening. We can vote to uphold the decision by the consideration committee. We can vote to overturn the decision by the consideration committee and remove the books from the schools. We can vote to modify the committee's decision. So an example would be keep a book at the high school level, but perhaps pull it from the middle school. And just so you know, there's also a fourth alternative that could possibly occur. We do have the right to temporarily suspend this. Bill, you had mentioned that you haven't had a chance to read all the books, and I think that may be true for other people. So what we could do this evening also is suspend this temporarily. It would require a two-thirds vote, and we would not be able to suspend it indefinitely. We would have to pick a specific date and take action at that time. So those are really, those are the actions that we can take this evening. Mr. Edlin?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider the bylaws of the board's suspension of policies, bylaws, and regulations, policy ninety-three forty, which states policies, bylaws, and board adoption regulations shall be subject to suspension for a specific, specified purpose in limited time by two-thirds majority vote of board members present at the meeting in the call for which the proposed suspension has been described. It says in writing. So I don't know if we can implement that policy. I'd like to make the motion, but it's not in writing. I'll write something real quick if you want, but
I do believe we can make that motion tonight.
Okay. My motion would be to, uh, two purposes. One is to allow board members the time to read all three books. And this was based on a recommendation of our attorney. That's my...
There is a motion on the floor, so what I'm gonna...
Okay.
We shouldn't be discussing yet. Let's first see if we can take it up. So is there a, is, is there a second?
A point of information, inquiry. Did the, did the motion include a date, specified date?
It would be, I, I would recommend to the April board meeting.
April?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's true. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
I have my reasoning for that, but...
There's a motion on the floor to temporarily suspend, um, this decision until April...
Can I, can you, I, I think you would have to say, um, the time limits under 6161G to be more specific. Not, not the decision, it's, it's, uh...
And 6161G is the 40 days?
Correct. Uh, under 6161G, there has to be a decision on this in 40 days. That is not a, a state law or a federal law, it's simply a board policy.
Right.
Now, if the board needs more time, they would simply suspend the, the 40-day rule, but there has to be a specific either number of days or a date at which the board will then act.
Okay.
But, and it would need a two-thirds vote of the board to do that.
So it's a 6161G policy that we need to...
Suspend.
Be taking the motion, okay.
Correct.
Pat?
Do you have a motion on the floor already?
No date.
It's a date of April.
Right, and it wasn't, it did not, it did not, it did not reference 6161...
No.
G either.
No.
Okay, so I, I would withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I would like to reinstate a motion, or to make a motion.
Okay.
The motion would be, um, in reference to Policy 6161G. I would like, uh, the motion to, uh, suspend Policy 6161G's 40-day limitation, uh, till a period of April 2015.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A point of question. It has to be a specific date. I mean, we need to...
That would be the eighth of April.
Eighth of April, okay. Thanks.
Okay, and that's the board meeting?
Correct.
April 8th, 2015. Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Point of question? What happens to the books until that time?
Can't answer that.
We need to get a second and then vote on this before we have discussion.
I'll second.
Second by Pat McCaffrey?
Okay.
Okay, now we can get into some discussion.
Okay. The two, two points that I would like to make on this motion was, first of all, um, as we've heard from a number of board members, not all the books have been written, have been read. And, you know, we have been advised by our attorney to make sure that all board members do in fact read these books, which was not required by, by Policy 6161G. So, you know, we have a legal opinion that our policy is not consistent with, with law. So we need to, first of all, get that straightened out in Policy Committee. Secondly, um, I don't know that we want to limit our choices to what has been offered to us this evening. And I, I think the Policy Committee, uh, would want to revisit this issue. I would recommend that the board, or that the Policy Committee take recommendations from the board for consideration on other options that we may want to consider on what to do with these books. For instance, um, we have been told that the books shouldn't be flagged. However, if we create a list, if the teachers create a list for parents and say, "You may object to this book," we flag the book. You have to be able to tell the parents somehow. So I'm, I'm not in agreement that we shouldn't be flagging these books. Number two, I don't know that these books, um, have to be out in a generally accessible area to students. For instance, if, if a parent has a question about this book that's flagged, the student shouldn't be able to check that book out unless they have the parent's permission. So we're not going to, you know, uh, remove this book from our school district. It'll still be there. But I believe that in some cases parental permission should be required because that is the job of raising a child. It is the parent's responsibility to raise the child, not the teachers. And so if there's some question about the content in a book, you know, that's a, that's a parental, parental discretion. So I don't think we have enough alternatives in this policy on what we want to do with the book. We don't have to remove the book from the school district. We can still have it here, but should it just be accessible to every student? So I'm, I'm, I, the reason my wanting to stretch this out to April is I want the Policy Committee to be able to have, present other alternatives than what we currently have in the existing policy.
I'm gonna go back to Mrs. Reinacek. You had a question before. Would you restate it, please?
Thank you. I was just going to ask, what happens to the books until then? Will they be still given as our curriculum?
Yep, yep, nothing changes. Nothing changes. We continue, um, as is.
But I think you need to, the, the only one that is part of the curriculum is The Kite Runner. The other two are simply available in the media center.
And if we have all the copies, because we're trying to get as many as we can for all of us, and if they're not available, then will they order more so they have them there, or how will that work?
I, I don't think they would order more.
Mr. O'Brien?
It, there's, I understand the concerns of the people who objected to the books. I, 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 I don't, I don't want to question, you know, I think they have legitimate concerns. I don't agree with, um, Mr. Edlin's interpretation of the legal, uh, legal document. What the legal document is, says if, if we choose to overrule the consideration committee, we may have a better case in court if we read the books before we do that. If we choose not to overrule the consideration committee, then there's nothing requiring us to read the books. I have read the books, but I don't feel it's a requirement for us to read the books to support the consideration committee. And to avoid legal action. And reading the books will not necessarily avoid legal action because then you'll have to decide, uh, if you're sued, you're going to have to do a book report in front of judges and lawyers, and each board member will be giving one. And, uh, it, when I read Looking for Alaska, for instance, I could see the arguments for the book being in our libraries. So when you take it in full context, and each reader's gonna look at it differently, I didn't look for the language when I read the book. I was trying to understand where the book was taking me to the point where the first complaint was about, um, the incident, which was them watching a video, actually. So, uh, no matter what we do, read the book, not read the books, if we vote to overrule the consideration committee, we are exposing the district to liability. I think that's pretty clear. All we're doing is maybe streaking our defense if we vote to overrule them and we've all read the books. So I'm uncomfortable with Mr. Edlin's interpretation of any requirement by the lawyers for us to read books. I think they're saying if we want to vote or override the consideration committee, then yeah, we should all read the books. I would say the consideration committee is much like us in empowering the site council. Uh, I know many board members here feel that we shouldn't be overriding site council actions unless there's very strong cause. We set up a, a committee of professionals, and not only that, some of this stuff went through CNI before it got on. So it's a little bit difficult for us, both from past practice, although each board member can make up their own mind and should, and also from what I'm reading from the legal prac, legal part of it, since we've set up this process through the consideration committee, which has professionals review and make your recommendations, it's gonna be hard for us to safely, no matter whether we read the books or not, um, reverse the decisions of the consideration committee.
Ms. Mann?
I also do not believe that sending that policy back to Policy Committee would have any effect on this tonight. This is before us, as is. You can't change it now to come up with another conclusion. If you change the policy, that would be for future. You can't go backwards and say, "I don't like what we have to decide, so I'm gonna change this, so I like it." So I really don't think that's effective as far as...
I agree.
Making a decision.
I agree.
Mr. Baumgart?
I'm not sure I agree with that. We, we have latitude to suspend a policy decision with a two-thirds vote. Uh, we do that when we, we take a policy to the board for, um, we want to, we want to do it right away because of some time restriction on it or something like that. So we, we have suspended policies with a two-thirds vote. And I really thought that's all that was being talked about here, but maybe I'm not reading the same thing. So if we, if we suspending, if we are suspending the policy, which says we have to vote on it in 40 days, which is tonight, and move it to a different date, specific time, um, I don't see why we can't do that.
And that, and that really is what the motion was, was on.
That's what I thought.
Is that we're suspending it temporarily.
I didn't think we were changing any policies.
And then Steve stated...
Which, by the way, is not debatable. Suspension of a rule. So...
Dr. Langel?
Well, with that... With that caveat... Get out your Roberts rules, huh?
Is that correct?
I...
Is that correct, uh, Mr. Gray and Pat? You guys are most familiar.
Uh, here, suspended, suspension of the rules is, is not debatable. Two-thirds vote required.
Excuse me. You're talking about rules of parliamentary procedure. You're not talking about policy.
Yeah, I don't care what you made, that's fine.
So to that point, and I, I agree. You know, if, if indeed then during this period, if it were to be suspended, we then looked at changing our policy. We are, as Pat Madden said, operating a little bit with this ex post facto kind of thing. Somebody gets arrested, and we say, "Well, we're gonna suspend your trial and sentencing until we, you know, change your rules." We really can't do that, so I think that's a problem. But on a, on a wider point, and I guess, I, I mean, like all of us, I think I've done a lot of thinking about all this, as Mr. O'Brien said too, you know, we have a responsibility as a board to, obviously, uh, the philosophy of the literature that we allow in this district, and the books we allow in this district. And on a wider point, the idea that should any of our books include the presence of human evil, you know, and as Mr. O'Brien said, you know, the Bible has a lot of human evil in it, and so does the stories of the Holocaust. I mean, my daughter came home from reading some of the books at South, very upset about the, what happened in the Holocaust. And then you open a discussion with your family about the presence of evil and the human experience. And, um, obviously, that's a good discussion to have. Some people, and I understand they want to raise their children differently, and I respect that, would rather not have their children exposed to that, and that can be their choice. And we've said that's their choice. We respect that in this district, and I do too. But I think that, um, in a wider sense, when you read, you know, great literature in, in history, sadly, there's a lot of evil. I mean, we could all point to classics that we've read along the way, whether it was in school or since, you know, where you learn a lot from what, um, people do and shouldn't have done, and how the world deals with that, or how the individual adolescent deals with that, or whatever. So, I mean, I think there's a tremendous amount to be learned and gained from reading books where you have to look at that, and you have to come to grips with what does that mean in a hu, in a human life? What does that mean? So, I mean, I, I'm all for people experiencing that unless the parents themselves want to censor it, and that's their choice. But as a district, I could never vote to censor.
Mr. Edlin?
Yes, thank you. The thing that I struggle with the absolute most about this entire issue, um, it's been brought up a number of times, is that there are no standards that are set in this policy on which to base a decision on whether a book is appropriate or not appropriate, and for what age, considering that these are children up until they turn 18. In society, as a society, we've already established that criteria visually in the motion picture industry, in the broadcast industry, which we also recognize, in the TV industry, broadcast industry, in the game industry with video games. But it seems like we're giving a pass to books. The criteria that I struggle with is if you took any one of these books and word for word scripted them and turned them into a motion picture, could any of the people on that committee take a field trip of students to go see that movie? They can hand them the book. The child can check the book out of the library. But we give books a pass strictly because it's, it's not something that's spoken. This is, the, actually, the, the state of Kentucky, it's either Kentucky or Tennessee, has a law that prohibits school districts from providing students gateways to sex. Okay? That's, that would ban at least one of these books from the school district in which the book was challenged and banned. So, I mean, we're not the only school district that would consider banning a book, and I'm not saying that's my decision. My decision has always been, my, my consideration has always been, should this book, should these books be in the hands of children? And I think that's a parental decision.
I believe Mr. O'Brien was next.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure we're, we're debating the motion. I mean, the motion is to suspend, to, to suspend, uh, you know, this decision essentially. And that motion is to just suspend it until April 8th. And the logic behind dispen, um, suspending it to April 8th is so we can modify the policy. That's, that's one of the arguments given by Mr. Edlin. I don't think the policy has to be modified. We can make any decision we want to, okay? We can, we can take the four possible, or we can pick any from the menu that Mr. Edlin suggests. That doesn't, we're not restricted on what decisions we make as a board by that, by the current policy. So I don't understand the need to revisit the policy that we use and, prior to making this decision. And I think I agree with Ms. Madden, that's kind of like trying to change the rules after the fact, which we could do, but I don't know why. You know, we have a decision to make that, um, under our policy, and if we tried to change it after the fact, I don't think that would look good for us in court either, that we have to handle under our policy with, um, some legal implications that whether we read the books or not, we're gonna have to face if we decide to change what the consideration committee decided. I think that's a likely outcome, given the nature of the angst over any sorts of censorship of books. And I read the comments in the journal, I think it was like 95 to 5, as to what does Wachah Shah think they're doing trying to ban books. That doesn't mean those people are right. But the mass population, this country, is based on a lot of freedoms. And, you know, freedoms are restricted for younger people, that's for sure. But the reality is, whether it's the right to keep and bear arms, First Amendment, go down the line, this country tends to err towards making sure those freedoms are preserved. Uh, that's one of the things that makes this country great. We have a Supreme Court that goes out of their way to emphasize the protection of the Bill of Rights and our freedom, and one of those things does tie our hands, um, per what I'm reading, in terms of some of the decisions we make tonight or we make sometime in the future. It doesn't really matter. But it seems like we're debating the decision tonight, even though we're saying we might want to put off the decision until April. So I will not be supporting the motion because I think the decision is kind of within our hands.
Okay, I had Mrs. Brusink and then Mrs. Reinacek.
Oh, I just simply wanted to, you know, disagree agreeably with you. I think when, in, in individual, especially children, because I worked with children for 40 years, each, and when we would have book discussions, each child takes their own personal experiences and their own belief system and, from their families, et cetera, and responds to the book in a variety of ways. So no one of us, when we read a book, would necessarily come up with... So no one of us, when we read a book, would necessarily come up with the same decision about the book, and I'm sure you understand what I'm saying.
Mrs. Reinacek?
So, if, if you have been an educator for all of that time, would you actually read aloud some of those books to kids? If this room were full of eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, would we be reading these books aloud? There are, there is a sex act, oral sex act, from beginning to completion, two pages. And I can't, I can't say it out loud, but we're gonna give that to our kids. When I send my kids to school every day, I trust that the school system, or I used to, that they would bring them back, or they would come back seven hours later, better educated for the world. I don't believe that these books do that, or, and I will say them individually.
So, I'm gonna, we need to get back to the motion and the germaneness of them, you know, this is-
We're not, so if we're not even going to take up the consideration of the parents, if we're, if we're giving our curriculum the words, the words that is explaining these acts, would we allow pictures in our libraries of these acts? We wouldn't. So the words are there.
We're, we're not at the point where we're debating the books right now, Mrs. Reinacek. We're debating whether or not we're going to suspend sixty-one, sixty-one G. And so that's what I would like to limit our discussion to, and there may be another motion this evening where we can actually discuss the validity of the books. And it's kind of a fine line, there's some gray here, so I'm trying not to, I want to keep us on task here, and I think we will get to, we may get to, talk this evening or at some other point in time, specifically on this. Mr. Baumgart?
I would like to make an amendment to the motion that Mr. Edlin made, changing the date to, I don't have a calendar in front of me, the date of the November board meeting.
Twelve.
November twelfth. So I'm moving that we change the date specific in the motion to November twelfth.
Okay, is there a second to that amendment? The motion for amendment?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Brusink, discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? That automatically goes to vote? Mr. Gray, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sue, take the roll call on that.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Ellen Langel?
No.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
No.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Six-three.
It does not pass, it fails three to six. So the amendment is not in action, we're back to the original date. Ms. Madden?
I'll call the question.
Okay. It's been called the question.
Excuse me, point of order, I was before Ms. Madden.
No, I had my hand up before we just got into the amendment.
Actually, Pat raised her hand before Bill. I probably should have called on Pat first.
All right.
But I made that split-second decision. Okay, so let's take, let's take the roll, Sue, on-
Repeat, would you repeat, please, the motion?
On the motion. And Sue, why don't you read back the motion, please?
I don't have it, I've got it on tape.
Okay. I believe, I believe the motion was to temporarily suspend the forty-day window in sixty-one, sixty-one G to September eighth, twenty fifteen.
April eighth.
Or, I'm sorry, April eighth, twenty fifteen. Is everyone clear on that? Make sure we all. So, and a yes vote would say we are temporarily gonna suspend that, that policy, and to April, April eighth, and we will take up the matter at that specific date. And a no vote means we will continue with the discussion this evening, and we won't suspend it. Okay, Sue.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Patricia Madden?
No.
William Baumgart?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Ellen Langel?
No.
Joseph Como?
No. That fails
Two to seven.
Two to seven. Two yeses, seven nos. Okay, so we're back to opening up the floor for other motions. Mr. Edlin?
Are we on discussion? Well, I guess we don't have a motion for us.
We need a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion.
I'm not prepared to make a motion.
Dr. Langel?
I'll make a motion that we approve, as a board, the results of the consideration committee established by our board under sixty-one, sixty-one G, and the committee's report to us as a result of their consideration. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I would just be clear on the motion, please.
I, I believe you're voting to uphold the decision of the consideration committee?
Mm-hmm.
You need to do it book by book.
Okay. Do you want to specify a-
You have to specify.
A specific-
These are three separate, yeah.
Okay, so I guess if we take it, for this is listed first book here, Looking for Alaska, my motion then is specific to that book to begin with.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to uphold the considerations committee's decision to uphold keeping Looking for Alaska in our curriculum and libraries.
In our libraries.
Middle school and high school.
In our libraries. Right.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Okay, discussion. Mrs. Reinacek?
If someone has not read the book, isn't, didn't our attorney advise that we should not do this?
I think there's different ways to interpret what our attorney has said. I think there's been one interpretation that Kurt had talked about that, and maybe I should just let Mr. O'Brien restate what he had said before. Mr. O'Brien?
I would say if this board as a whole makes the decision opposing Mrs. Langel's motion, then those members who supported it, well, vote no on Mrs. Langel's position, would be expected to have all have read the book. Those who had supported Mrs. Langel's position, and if it passes, wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a problem. So, if it passes Mrs. Langel's position, there wouldn't be any legal implication whether you read the book or not, okay? Because there's no one gonna challenge you legally on First Amendment grounds for allowing people to read books, okay? But if you, if we decide as a board collectively not to go with Mrs. Langel's decision, then we'd have to look at what the implications would be legally. And one of those protections would maybe be reading the books, reading the offensive parts as per the attorney's guidelines, but that doesn't prevent us from getting, still having legal action.
I think there's, there could be another interpretation to, to what our attorneys had said, and it could be interpreted that we should have read the books and/or at least the portions of the books that are offensive or under, under discussion, and that we should have, at a minimum, have read those portions. Because nobody knows what essentially the motions that will be brought forth tonight. So, you could interpret what our attorneys had said is, we should, we should have read them, but, Mrs. Langel?
Obviously-
And this is why, this is why I prefaced, I think there's different ways to interpret what our attorney said. I believe that.
I guess, again, I don't agree. I think that what we're looking at is sort of the history of censorship in this country, which certainly is a long history and history of the world in terms of literature, goes way back. And I think what the courts have said is, if you vote to censor, okay, in other words, if you vote to remove and censor, the burden upon you is much greater.
That's right.
If you vote to honor the decision of your committee, your study committee, then it isn't mandatory that everybody's read it, although I suspect a lot of people on this board have, but it's, it isn't equal, according to the courts.
Okay. Mr. Edlin?
I have not read the book, and I will not be supporting this motion. And the reason that I will not be supporting it is because I don't, I believe our policy is in error. We do not have a standard for which the committee was to base its decision on. What we have is nine opinions. They're personal opinions. They're personal opinions on the context of the book. Parents, we've heard from, over and over again, complain about the content of the book. My wife wanted to read Looking for Alaska, and she did, and I asked her for her impressions. She said it was a very good book, but why did the author have to put in continually defiance of the law by these young people, drinking almost every single night, engaged in sex, swearing? Did the author have to do that to make the point in the book? In other words, could this have been a good book had he not put those things in the book? I said, well, if you, using that interpretation, if you had that book, and we did apply a standard to judge that book by, such as the motion picture industry has a standard that the book could be judged by, what would the book be judged? And she said R. Well, we all know that R is restricted, is it to seventeen and over, or, over seventeen? I don't recall. Either way, we do not have a standard to base the book on for nine people to go down a checklist and say, this, 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 and this fits our criteria. So we're subjecting the book to personal opinions and not necessarily content of the book. We're subjecting it to context.
Mr. Baumgart?
I did read this book. I found it to be a very good book, a very good book. I, I thought the messages in it, there are multiple messages in it that are very appropriate for high school kids. It's focused at high school kids, it's about high school kids. The language in the book is unfortunately the same language that the high school kids use, so I'm not at all bothered by that. To walk up and down our halls, you'll hear it. So that didn't scare me. I agree, I don't understand why he had to put two pages in there about oral sex. I didn't see that was necessary. But if the kids wonder what it is, they can look it up in the Oxford Dictionary and find the same thing in there. They can look it up in Google and find the same thing in there, so that doesn't impress me all that much. I think it's a great book. Again, back to the messages, the things they were trying to get across, or he was trying to get across, the kids, I think were very awakening. In fact, you think for adults, it's awakening. I don't know that I agree with it being in the middle schools. That's, that's a little issue I have with it. I have no problem with it being in the high schools. Again, I, I think it was well-wit, well-written, easy to read. Yes, there were some things in there like, like that, those two pages that I don't know why they had to put them in there that way. But, back to the, one of the comments we heard earlier is, we have to look at the entire thing, not just the incident within the book. This, globally looking at this as a, as a book for high school kids is a yes. For high school kids, it's a yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, you know, I, as soon as I heard about the, the questions about this book, I said, I gotta see what this book's about, because if this is really true, I want to know why, why it's in our schools, especially our middle school. What we hear about happening in the book, the way it's presented as happening, didn't happen in that book in that way. It's, two kids break into the rich kids' rooms and steal a video that has the incident on the video. They themselves never participated in any of this, other than watching it, and the, the young girl said how disgusting it was for women to be treated like this. So there was trying to teach a message from it. I did watch a YouTube video of the author that said he's gotten a lot of criticism for those two pages in the book, and he wanted to show how you should have a relationship when you really care about somebody, which is, in this case, was just a hugging relationship, and a relationship which was by no means appropriate. And that was his point, and he felt that it was a point he wanted to make in the book. It was his first book as an author, and if you took out all the stuff that you would, that Mr. Edlin would suggest you would take out of that book, you wouldn't have a book anymore, you wouldn't be able to get the message across he's trying to get. You know, it was, it was, and I appreciate the correction by one of the speakers tonight to say you support the book. I don't support the book. You know, I, I'm not here to support the book. What I would say is that, once we start down this path of banning books, labeling them, putting them behind, where will we stop? I mean, there'd be a ton of books, and if we had to read every one of them as board members, we wouldn't have any time for our day jobs. I mean, it's a challenging thing. So we set up this consideration committee of professionals. I think it's one of the wisest policies this board did. Now, Mr. Edlin suggests we should give them guidelines. I think that's possible, I mean, we could give them guidelines, but we have a tendency to trust the professionals in this district to make decisions. And the first decision that's made that we trust them with is putting them on the shelves to begin with. Once they're on the shelves, they're awfully hard to take them off, per the law. So I'm real disappointed that the book's being mischaracterized as much as it's been from the day one about the content. They're definitely trying to demonstrate to kids that you make bad decisions, bad things happen, okay? And then that's what happens in this book. Bad decisions were made and bad things happen. I, when I was a kid, I had a lot of cousins that went away to Christian boarding schools. They came back and they smoked, they drank, you know? It didn't do them one bit of good, and they still smoke and drink to this day. It's not that it was a Christian school, but that kind of explains the environment these two kids were in, or this group of kids were in. And, you know, it, it, it's not that this book is not part of what teenagers see as somewhat real life. And that's what this young author is noted for, is writing books that teenagers can say, yeah, that's, that can happen, those things can happen. And that's a book that kids will read, and, and adults probably should read them too. So, I don't want it to be said I support the book, I understand the book. I do want to say I do support what the courts have told me that I should support. I don't believe in censorship. I don't believe in restricting gun rights or any other thing in the Bill of Rights. So, and I don't think too many people on this board would believe in restricting rights. I do understand the concerns of those people who have brought this to our attention, and I do understand, as Mrs. Langel said, that, you know, I think we should be very, much more assertive in making sure our parents know what books are on the reading curriculum for courses. I think that's an entirely valid criticism. And that's not labeling a book, that's just giving the list of books that are in our curriculum. We can even give a short synopsis of the book, so the parents have that, that knowledge of what the book's all about. And every parent has a right to get on the internet and read the comments about the book and see if it's on one of those books that people are challenging all the time. Let's give you some examples of books that have been challenged. To Kill a Mockingbird, okay? Slaughterhouse-Five was one, the Supreme Court was over. George Orwell's Animal Farm, I believe, is another one. There's a lot of major, major books. Those books, I read all those books in high school.
Huckleberry Finn.
Huckleberry Finn. So, at any point in time in our history, people have talked about banning books that today we'd say, why? Now, many on this board know I travel a lot, and in those countries that I travel to, China, at one time, South Africa, the Arabian countries, Russia, they do all sorts of banning of books and movies and everything else. That's not this country. And I don't think that's this, this community, so.
Mr. Edlin?
But we do ban our children from going to movies that contain the same content of what's in this book. Is that a form of censorship?
Dr. Langel?
Oh, okay, I thought you were pointing him. I understand, and the movie issue keeps coming up, and I think that's a separate issue, and obviously, we could deal with that separately, if it came to us. But historically, the print media has been what's been protected in this country, and, you know, we might say, well, gee, our Constitution, our First Amendment is, you know, out of date. But if a parent wants to take a student to an X-rated movie, they can do it. But what's been protected historically has been print media. So, I mean, that's why it's in front of us, because going all the way back to our founding fathers, they weren't thinking about movies. You know, everything in the history of book censorship or no censorship has been print media. media. So that's why.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I wanna read the definition of censorship, practice of officially examining books, movies, et cetera, and suppressing unacceptable parts. Our job as a Board of Education is to listen to parents and our community, and do what's best for kids. And I've heard it said before that we could be going down a slippery slope, keep hearing the slippery slope. But there's no line right now that's saying, "This is good, and this needs to be flagged" to let parents know, or let parents make the decision, put the decision back in the parents' hands. And I can't believe that our number-one rule for when students are engaging each other, or in classes, or when they have technology, it's appropriate language, and this is not appropriate language. Many cases have also won. I've spent a lot of time on the computer as well, and don't let certain people say that, "Oh, you know, it's the law, we're not gonna win." If we're not doing this for kids, if we're not putting kids first, and I guess, don't wanna throw this at you, but I'm the only parent here that have kids that are affected by this, then what are we here for?
Can I respond to that, Sue?
Dr. Langel?
I understand your concerns, as I do the concerns of parents. But again, our policy is, if a parent wishes to block their child from reading these, the parent has that right. Parent doesn't necessarily have the right to remove that book from our library for everybody else. So, I mean, I think that's the issue here. We're not saying, "Parents, you can't tell your kids what they can and can't read." That's a parent's right, of course they can. If they can enforce it, which of course is another question. But I think that what we've done in this district, under 61-61G, I respect. We've set up a policy, we've set up a group of professionals who have done their job. And they have looked at the content, not just the context, of these books, and they have deliberated and debated, as I think, professionals. And they're not saying, you know, "Parents, you can't restrict your kids." That's not the point here. They're saying that they do not believe these books merit censorship, and that's really their professional decision.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. The parents aren't knowing what books we've heard from before, and I have a child in high school, I have yet to receive a list of the books that my child is gonna be reading.
And I made that point, and I think that's a separate issue, but going forward, we have to look at that.
Mr. Edlin?
It was recommended that a synopsis of these books be placed for the parents to be able to read. Will that synopsis contain exactly what parents find objectionable? Now, I'm getting into the area where I'm saying, because we don't have definitions of what we're judging these books by, what is offensive to one person may not be offensive to another. So what are we gonna say? This book is about two teenagers who are going through rough times in life? Or are we gonna say this book contains a videotape which has graphic descriptions of oral sex, the F-bomb over a hundred times, and, you know, if you happen to find that offensive, you may not want your child reading this book? So I'm gonna go back to what I said about this policy, is that this policy is strictly subjective.
I think we're starting to drift from the motion. We're starting to talk on policy and debate policy, and I know that that is a topic that we can take up, but the motion on the floor right now is we're looking at whether or not we're gonna uphold the Considerations Committee's decision for Looking for Alaska or not. And so I'd like to try and keep the debate around that right now.
I'll call the question.
Steve did have his hand up, and he was talking when I cut him off.
Under Robert's rules, I'd have to move the question if I wanted to close up debate, and I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make sure you know.
I didn't catch the subtlety.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion, and that amendment is to place Looking for Alaska in a special section of all libraries within the Waukesha School District, notifying potential readers of the book of the content of the book.
Is there a second to that amendment? Second by Mrs. Reinacek? Discussion?
I move the question.
Okay, it's time to take the vote on the amendment.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
No.
Patricia Madden?
No.
William Baumgart?
No.
Barbara Brzink?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
No.
Okay, back to the original motion, to uphold the Considerations Committee decision on Looking for Alaska. Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, I think we should take a vote. Okay, let's take that vote.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Steve Edlin?
No.
William Baumgart? Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes seven-two.
I'm sorry, seven-two.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I didn't announce that the last one did not pass two-seven, yeah. Sorry for not taking the count there. I'm sure your count was inaccurate, though, Sue. Okay, so we have two other books for consideration this evening?
Well, I would make the motion, and I read it, that we reapply all my words under 61-61G, but specifically regarding The Kite Runner.
So, I'm not sure if I understood that motion. Would you?
It's to uphold.
To uphold, okay.
Decision of the Considerations Committee for under 61-61G regarding The Kite Runner.
Okay. Is there a second by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
Mr. Edlin?
I'd like to reiterate that I did not read the book, because I feel that policy is in error. We do not have a standardized system for which the Considerations Committee could base their judgment on, and it was based on personal opinions.
Mr. O'Brien? Karen, Mrs. Reinacek, I think you had your hand up first.
Can I make an amendment, or are we just talking? Okay, I'd like to make an amendment that the book be flagged.
Is there, yeah, I'm not sure what the definition of flagged is.
Okay. That if these books are going to be remaining in our libraries, that the books be flagged in a way that the parents would be notified if the book is coming home with the child, or if the child would like to check out the book.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that amendment? I'm sorry, second to that amendment?
I'd second.
Second by Mr. Edlin? Mr. O'Brien?
I appreciate the motion. I think the problem is, is it sets the book out separate from other books without consideration. I think, I think what Mrs. Reinacek would like to accomplish is understandable, but takes a different type of forum and review than this particular forum, that we look at all our books in context relative to curriculum and do a broader look. I think if we were to flag this one book, it would expose us as, you know, one of the opposing people has said it would. I do think that anybody who wants to take that risk, certainly you should make sure that you're prepared, that you've read the book and studied the book, and I'm sure Mrs. Reinacek has, should this motion be successful, amendment motion.
Mr. Baumgart?
I understand the making of the amendment, but it seems to me it is directly opposite to the motion that was first made. That motion was to accept the Considerations Committee's recommendation, and this is totally outside of that recommendation. I don't see how we can amend this motion, the initial motion, this way. It seems like it's totally contradictory.
You would have the option to modify. That third option is to modify, and...
But that's not the motion that's been made.
Well, it's to maintain the book, and the decision by the Considerations Committee was to maintain the book in the schools or in the libraries, and it could be modified to be restricted, or whatever.
Yeah, I do think the amendment is in play, and that it would just essentially, getting back to the initial motion, to uphold the Considerations Committee's decision, that still would need to be voted on, but if that was passed as part of that motion, we would just be flagging this one book. So I think they can work, I think they can work together, technically. Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. And as Mr. O'Brien said, this is one book that we're singling out. Maybe this is just one book that will be the start. Maybe we can take a look at our books, because our media specialists have been ordering books without board approval. Our curriculum, we used to, okay curriculum, and it used to come through us, and now it doesn't. So they can order whatever books they want, and maybe we do need to take a look at them. Maybe we're not segregating this book and singling it out. Maybe it's the first, and maybe we should start.
That's not accurate. There are standards that the media specialists use to order books. Second of all, any book that goes into the curriculum, like The Kite Runner, has to be board-approved, and that was board-approved in 2006.
For eleventh grade.
Okay, that's, it was approved. But the other books were in the media center, they may or may not have been used, there's no, you know, a teacher may assign those, but those are not, you know, those are supporting books, they are not part of the curriculum, whereas The Kite Runner is specifically part of the English curriculum.
And just a clarification, just on one of the details, Mr. Gray. It is accurate that The Kite Runner was approved by the board at eleventh grade.
That's correct.
But we did make, in curriculum instruction at the full board, also the change to move around our courses. And so I think that's implicit in that decision, to bring that down to the sophomore year. So it technically was approved by this board. Mrs. Langel?
Karen, Mrs. Reinacek, I appreciate your concern, as I do that of the other parents, though it may not seem to them that I do. But if indeed this is something that you feel strongly about going forward, then I think at some point our policy committee, which I think you're maybe on, I think, but even if not, a policy committee could look at that. You know, do they wanna be more specific in 61-61G? Do they wanna, you know, have a policy in terms of adoption of books for the library vis-à-vis for CNI? I mean, these are all policy decisions that the board could look at. I'm not sure Mrs. Madden will be thrilled with my idea, but that's a separate question. And, you know, as I remember one of my high school English teachers saying, the minute that he announced that a Henry Miller book was in our high school library, and that there had been a lot of parents objecting to it, you couldn't even get it. I mean, the librarian would've had to order about fifty more, because every kid in the school that heard that wanted to go get, read his book. So, I mean, to a certain extent, if it goes to policy, you know, I'm fine with that, and we can look at it. But I don't think at this point to second-guess the professionalism of our Considerations Committee, and I believe as professionals they looked at it, I don't think this was a personal opinion. But going forward, if we decide we should flag certain books, and how that would be implemented, and, you know, how we better order thirty extra, because if we put a red marker in them, you know, that's, kids are gonna race for it. But that's a separate issue, I'm seeing, than what we're doing tonight. I think that's a separate issue.
Mr. O'Brien?
And I think it's close to what is proposed by the amendment, to, I think, what a number of board members have stated that they agree with, in that we wanna make sure that parents are aware of what is what children are being suggested as required reading for our curriculum. This happens to be one of those books, and that's something that I think we're, certainly we're gonna probably have to address. It doesn't require the book to be flagged or anything like that, which is a step in a little farther direction, because then we're starting to cut into some areas that some people would say, whether we agree with it or not. Look, I'm not trying to say I know what the courts will rule, I just know that whenever we get into these issues, we have to be very careful about unintended consequences. And in this case, we have an approved curriculum book, and now we're gonna suddenly flag it as inappropriate content, for inappropriate content, or put it into behind so it can't be accessed. I would say that we do need to do a better job of communicating to parents what their children's reading materials will be and associated with our curriculum. That's a separate subject, not part of the motion, but I think this motion goes a little bit too far, specific to this book at this time.
The amendment.
The amendment.
So, the amendment is, that's on the floor right now, is, it's been suggested to flag The Kite Runner in our libraries. Does that wrap up summary-wise? Karen, what, okay. All right, let's take that to vote.
William Baumgart?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Ellen Langel?
No.
Karen Reinacek?
Yes.
Steve Edlin?
Yes.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Patricia Madden?
No.
Barbara Brzink?
No.
Joseph Como?
No. That fails two-seven. So now we're back to the original motion to uphold the Considerations Committee's decision to keep The Kite Runner in our curriculum and in our libraries. Are we ready to take a vote on that?
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. That passes seven-two, Sue?
Yes.
And now we have a third book up for consideration, and that is Chinese Handcuffs is what is remaining.
Don't talk to me, you guys want me to make all the votes?
Mr. O'Brien?
Somebody else wanna step up here?
Mr. O'Brien?
I move to accept the recommendation of the Considerations Committee to keep Chinese Handcuffs as its current status, and...
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Edlin?
I will not be supporting the motion. I did not read Chinese Handcuffs, because I believe that policy 61-61G is in error by not having a standardized basis on which to formulate the opinion of the Committee, Considerations Committee.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I'd like to make the same amendment to flag this book.
Okay, there's an amendment on the floor, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Edlin? Discussion? We'll take you to a vote, Sue.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
No.
Patrick McCaffrey?
No.
Patricia Madden?
No.
William Baumgart?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
No.
Ellen Langel?
No.
Joseph Como?
No. It fails two-seven. So now we're back to the initial motion to uphold the Considerations Committee's decision to keep Chinese Handcuffs in our, in our high schools and middle schools. Mr. Baumgart?
I did not read this book, so I don't know whether it's a good or bad, but I am going to go along with the Considerations Committee, because I believe they've done their work.
I will read it.
Okay.
We're gonna give you a quiz.
Let's take the vote, Sue.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
And Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven-two, Sue?
Amen.
Um, a couple, a couple comments. Thank you for, thank you for the debate, the sincere debate tonight. The Considerations Committee followed our policy and guidelines, in my opinion, to a T, and we heard tonight that there may potentially be some suggestions to improve that, and as Dr. Langel had pointed out, we do have a process for that, and that is our Policy Committee. So, you know, given, given what we've said tonight, as always, any board member can make a suggestion to be forwarded to, for consideration on our Policy Committee, for our Policy Committee to take up, so feel free to do so if, if you believe we shouldn't, you know, change, change 61-61G, or any other policy, for any other reason, too, so. Thank you, thank you for your... other reason, too. So, thank you, thank you for your participation in this sensitive topic. Moving on to our next item tonight, we, I think this is a new record. This is the latest we've ever gotten to our consent agenda. Lori, did we have any gifts that we received from the public?
We did.
We did. We have one to report this evening. $500 was donated to the Waukesha North Marching Band by Kevin Corthes. This donation will be used to either pay for a rental or purchase of an equipment trailer.
And we thank them for that. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. Note that there were no expulsion hearings that were held this last month. And if any board member wishes to have an item set aside for a separate consideration, please indicate at this time. Okay, hearing none. Steve Edlin will present the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of two resignations and four new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart? Any discussion? Sue, will you take the roll call?
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine-zero, Sue. Next, we have Superintendent Gray's report.
I will shorten this up a little bit. First item, our Employee Health and Wellness Center will have an open house on October 29th at 6:30 PM. You are all invited. I believe Mr. Como will be one of our guest speakers at that event.
Come for the food, not for the speaker.
On October 13th, which is next Monday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, North High School will be holding their first made, and that's Manufacturing Automotive Design and Engineer Community and Career Symposium. And again, all the board members are encouraged and invited to attend that event as well.
When is that, 13th?
Monday, yeah. This is coming Monday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
I will, that'll be in my update as well, just as a reminder. So, so we'll see that again. Two meetings that we need to schedule. One is Facilities and Finance Committee, preferably the week of the 20th, and that would be either the 20th or 21st, it sounds like. I, we don't, we don't know what the committee chair's schedule is, but that is, you know, one of those, two days are preferable that week. And then the week after, we need a full board meeting to adopt the levy. That would be the week of the 27th. And again, we wait till late in October because we don't get our aid calculation until late October, so...
Do you want, should we check calendars now, or should we have Sue call around?
Well, what I would, I guess I would have Sue call, because we're looking at two different days for that, for that FNF meeting. And then the 27th, you know, that'll give people time to check, because it's coming up quick. So that'll give people an opportunity to check calendars.
I'll call if anyone calls.
At what time, 7:00 AM? Oh.
I'm 7:00.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear what you said. I thought you said early tomorrow morning, so. Sometime tomorrow morning, I'm sorry.
He never quits working.
And that's my report.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Gray.
I'll start with Mr. Gray.
We're going to move into our committee reports now. Our first committee is Curriculum and Instruction, presented by Barbara Brzink.
Yes, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that it has not been agendized, you know. But I feel, if you look on, under curriculum instruction, it says, "None, none, none, none." We met, and we had a very productive meeting, and I feel that it's important for us to share the results of the meeting. Does anyone have a problem with that? I ask that it be, in the future, that we do include it, you know, our report about what we...
I think we should turn to Robert's rules.
I, I think if it's a, if it's a short discussion, just an overview, you may be okay. If it gets, if it becomes a board discussion, I think that puts, steps us over the line.
Dr. Langill?
And I'm sure Ms. Madden knows more about this than I do, but if it's an action item and you're a public body, you have to agendize it.
Okay.
If it's an information item.
And do you have any action items tonight, Mrs. Brzink?
No.
These are all informational items?
Right. But I just wanted to...
Pat, you concur with that?
Remind you that our former president felt that we always needed to have a CNI report, and that we didn't in the past. And that was something that he felt was very important, because he felt it was a very important committee. So I have a brief report, if I may share it with you. Okay. Very quickly, Tim Join shared all the great things that are happening at the Waukesha Academy of Health Professions, as well as the Waukesha Engineering Preparatory Academy. Both of the academies went through some extensive renovations this summer to provide a better space for students to utilize. Both of the academies continue to receive high scores on both the ACT and School Report Card, as well as being ranked, and are ranked among the Newsweek's top high school. As a district, we are focused on reaching new levels of achievement as a means to measure progress. Our district holds quarterly meetings to analyze current results. The three high schools joined us to share some details of the quarterly meetings, as well as their plans and focus points. And then finally, we were able to meet and hear from our new data coordinator, Deana McCormick. And Deana shared her role in the district, which is to gather, analyze, and use data in an effective and efficient way that will improve teaching and learning. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brzink. Our next committee is our Human Resources Committee, presented by Mr. Edlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Got to drag the right report out here. Action items, the purpose, I'm going to make sure I got the right one, yeah. The purpose of the revision, it was the approval of the employee handbook revision. The purpose of the revision is to update specific sections to reflect current practice and law. The revisions recommended are, ah, I got the wrong, I don't think I got the right script here. Is that right? Mm-hmm. Is that right? Okay. It just didn't sound right. It just didn't seem worded properly. Not used to this format. The revisions recommended are a change to variable our employees in terms of definition, clarity and responsibility for payment of benefits while on an unpaid long-term leave of absence, benefit eligibility, changes for variable our employees, for variable our employees, alignment of low comp time is calculated with how overtime is calculated, and updates of job classifications for support staff. I move to approve the employee handbook revisions. And I'd be glad to reread that if anybody didn't get that.
Is there a second to that? Second by Ms. Madden?
Thank you.
Okay, Sue, take the vote.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Yeah, the handbook is a living and breathing document, and we will have more of those in the future, as, as we all know. So, Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 5B1, Revised Calendar. This is an informational item. The purpose of the revision is to reclassify the changed, the exchange days options for teachers that attended for July staff development. Teachers that participated in the three-day summer staff development in July 2014 are given three days off during professional development days during the year. The identified exchange days were March 12th, 13th, May 22nd, and May 22nd of 2015. Due to the potential for a snow day makeup, the exchange days will be exchanged to October 31st, 2014, March 12th and 13th of 2015. The calendar will be adjusted to reflect this change. Teachers and administrators were given the opportunity to provide feedback, and an overwhelming majority approve of this plan. A copy of the revised calendar was provided in your packet. So teachers that attended during the summer, we owe them three days, essentially.
That's correct.
So they'll have the opportunity. They will not be able to attend, they will not be required to attend the professional development days. Only those new hires and teachers who didn't attend during the summer will be participating in the professional development days.
And the reason for the change is, we don't know what's going to happen from December through April in terms of the weather. The report is that it's supposed to be worse than last year, and we know how that turned out. So we're trying to free up, keep as many days after January as make-up days as possible, so.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Edlin. We'll move on to our policy committee, presented by Pat Madden.
We have three action items tonight. The first one is revision to policy 4100, Recruitment, Selection, Discrimination, and Harassment. The language on lines 18 and 19 should have been removed in previous updates. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Discussion? We'll move right into the vote, Sue.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine-zero, Sue. Pass?
Second action item is a revision to policy 5127, Graduation. The CNI Committee approved changes to the required credits for social studies. These provisions put the policy in line with those changes. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Okay, Sue, call the vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine-zero, Sue. And Pat?
And our third revision tonight is to policy 5141, Sub-7, School Wellness. A reference to nutritional guidelines has been added as required by the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Discussion? Sue, will you call the vote?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Ellen Langill.
Aye.
Steve Edlin.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. It passes nine-zero, Sue.
Our next policy committee will be October 21st at 6:00 PM, unless we change that because of FNF. I don't know.
Right. Or, or we might be able to build it in.
Swing both of them.
Because I know there's a couple policies that we need to work on, and some that we need to get through, complete, either complete or discard, either one. But I know Joe has some that have to go forward, and so.
Right.
So Sue will, Sue will call around and try and coordinate.
Right. Lynn will work on, once we know the FNF, then Lynn, if it's, if it's the 20th, then policy will be the 21st.
Okay.
If it's the 21st, then Lynn will call around and, the members, and find out a better date for that. The problem we've had in September is, there've been a lot of extra night meetings. I think almost every night in September, I've had to be at something. So it's been very hard to schedule the policy. And you see this once again, we're taking up two nights in October for special meetings, and so, but we'll, we'll get one in because there are some things that need to be completed.
So, Pat, when is it?
Tentatively it's set for October 21st at 6:00 PM. Thank you. And that concludes my review, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. We, we ran through those pretty quickly and took the vote pretty quickly, but there is, I'm sure, a lot of discussion in the committee, as always, where we do the heavy lifting in our committees and...
That's right.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Okay. Thank you, Pat. Our next committee is the Technology Committee. The report will be given by the Chair, Patrick McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Pat. We'll move right into Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. Kurt O'Brien.
Yeah, we had scheduled on the agenda tonight one action item, which is the approval and award of Guaranteed Energy Savings Performance Contract. We didn't actually take action on this contract. We weren't happy with the contract itself, so it was tabled until a future meeting. Just so the board members are aware, FNF members in particular, that future meeting, we're looking at it being the 20, 21st, 22nd, somewhere around there. The, we have a timeframe involved for the requested contract modifications to be submitted to administration. Administration will go through it and submit it to FNF, so there'll be a few days of back and forth. Just so everybody knows, the outcome of this will determine the mill levy and additional things as we go forward. So eventually, the full board will also have to vote on this contract. So that's, one action item has been tabled until a future meeting. Now, for the information items, we had monthly budget report. The committee received the monthly budget report for activity through September 2014. $7,823,823 was reported in general fund revenue, and $8,495,963 was expended during the month. There was no revenue reported in special education, and $1,782,544 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection. Ms. Clifton, other information item is 2014, 2015 budget update. Ms. Clifton represented the committee with an estimated tax levy to be adopted due to the fact we are not projecting a cash deficit and do not anticipate a need for borrowing. The district is able to wait for the equalization aid from the state and to finalize people count to adopt the budget and certify the levy. An additional meeting will be needed at the end of the month to certify the tax levy. And I want to point out that this is the first time in eons we haven't had to borrow.
Right.
Short-term borrow.
Do the short-term borrow.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. This is a result of us building up our fund balance, which most districts have as a percentage of budget, fund balances, so they don't have to borrow either. So we finally reached the hurdle that most districts have. It doesn't mean that we're wealthy. We still have unfunded obligations that are well above our fund balance. But it does mean we don't have to borrow, or at least that's the plan at this point in time. And that's, that's a wonderful thing. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Just if I, if I recall, there have been some years where we've paid like $900,000 in interest in our short-term borrow.
That's right.
Now, those were different times, back more in the mid, mid, like 2004, 2005.
Oh, probably mid-'90s. I think by mid-2000s, the rates were down. But, yeah, I would say late, late '90s, you were looking at some, some...
I, I would have you look at the mid-2000s, too. We were still there for some high-interest rates. But anyways, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for that report. And we do not have a need to go into closed session, correct, Mr. Gray? All right, we stand adjourned. I'm sorry.
Mr. President, just as a reference, I was wondering if the board could be informed where we stand on our outstanding OPEP liability. I know that we've made a large jump in the reduction costs of health insurance, and a number of people have retired out or moved out of the system. So that number, I would expect to be dropping significantly.
Well, I think, I think that should be the subject of a, of a, an upcoming FNF meeting soon, because not only has it dropped, but we're also looking at, at different ways to fund that retirement plan. And that, you'll see a significant drop if we, if we're able to implement that. So...
Right.
I, I think, I don't know how soon Chris or Lori will be ready to present that at FNF, but I, I'd like to present it as a whole package, so we can see not only how, how far we've come, but how far we can go with, with the new plan, so.
Very good. Thank you.
And, and as Chair of FNF, I'd like to say that's a very good idea, Mr. Edlin. I'm glad you brought it forth. And I'll be working with Ms. Clifton and Mr. Gray, so we can get the full roadmap of how we, how we reduce that obligation over the last several years.
Mr. Edlin, you're really quick. I was in the middle of slamming the gavel down to adjourn us, and now I'll finish that task. We stand adjourned.